Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 1st, 2023 Select Board Meeting. We are meeting in a hybrid meeting this evening. All five of us are here in person along with our Town Manager, Michael Herbert, and our Assistant Town Manager, Jen Ball. We are being recorded and broadcast by WACA TV. We have some feedback. Hold on one second.
There's a computer microphone and a regular microphone on.
Are we good? Is that better? Yeah, that's better. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. So we are being recorded and broadcast by WACA TV this evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brogan, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is citizens' participation. I would ask that anyone that would like to participate this evening via Zoom, to use the raise hand function on Zoom if you would like to speak this evening. I see Mark DeSoney, you have your hand raised. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, Mark. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
We're good. Thank you, Mark.
Having some, having, it may not be town pressing news, but I'm having good news here at home with my dad. I'm going to announce that out because the first response is always good to know. My dad's getting better, getting more help, and getting stronger, and we're doing well. I myself is more happy with the lack of snow emergency in this state area. I'm good with that. That's why I'm happy. And all else, the agenda, and I would like to be happy to thank the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, and Beth Reynolds for the forum that was on the other night. I did send in feedback the weekend after, and I know we got an update on that. I'm very hungry to know what, how that is going and to have an idea. What was the responses back? So house good, town getting better, and winter is being happy with how it's not snowing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'm glad things are going well. So our first item on the agenda that our scheduled hearing is at 7:15, so we can, why don't we move on to old new business? Can we go ahead and do the open town meeting warrant, Michael?
Absolutely. So Jen has provided for you warrant guidance for the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Jen, do you want to go through that?
So we're going to open up the warrant for our May town meeting, our May town meeting. There you go. Sorry, missed that. Our May town meeting is always the first Wednesday in May. This year, it's May 3rd. So opening it now, so we'll be taking any notices of intent for a warrant article over the next month or so.
So open the warrant tonight.
Yep. Deadline, and then deadline for notices of intent to submit to me by the very beginning of March. It gives us enough time to put the warrant together. And then we will close, we only have one meeting in April scheduled, I believe. And so it's a little bit earlier than normally where we close it. So we would close it April 12th at that meeting. It has to be closed seven days before. So if there's any reason that we need to not post it and reopen it, we'd still have some time. It has to be posted by April 25th.
So we'll have, you know, obviously, we have a number of standard articles for the Annual Town Meeting, but we do understand that sustainability is probably going to have a couple of warrant articles, and then Keefe Tech's going to have a warrant article as well.
For sustainability, if, are they planning to come to our meeting to present sort of what they're looking to do?
I'm sure they will.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure we reach out to them and get them on the.
Michael, I need just a quick question on Keefe Tech. What, relative to what?
So they're looking at establishing a stabilization fund, a capital stabilization fund for future repairs that they have to make at Keefe Tech. So as part of that, each community that Keefe Tech serves needs to take its own separate vote to allow that stabilization.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? So if, could I have a motion to?
Sure. I move that we open the town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. And why don't we, why don't we go ahead and approve our consent agenda, move on to the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
And I just want to add my thanks to Rob St. Germain for all his time as a Town Forest Committee member. And I know he's still planning on being involved, but I want to thank him for his leadership for so long.
I think we all sound have that same sound.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Was that a second from you?
From Joe.
Joe? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would just add, we might want to consider at some point giving Rob a citation, a Select Board citation, invite him to a meeting and really acknowledge, I think, all the work and effort he put, has put in, not just on Town Forest, but, you know, Stormwater Group. He was on Open Space and REC for a while. So I think that would be an appropriate commendation.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
How about planting a tree in his, in his honor?
I'm sure that's something that we can do.
You know, as part of the redevelopment process.
I think we still got a couple of trees to plant.
I know we do. That's why I'm thinking, why not we, you know, honor him by planting a tree in his name?
Yeah, I think the board would want to discuss that as, you know, part of a policy, you know, a no raw policy. But I think it's something that's, you know, could be open to for sure.
That's a good idea, too. Well, Rob has given a lot of himself to our community. And it's literally blood, sweat, and tears for the work that he's done. So we all thank him. And I think it is a great idea to bring him to a board meeting soon and give him a citation. We have a few minutes before our hearing. Yeah, can we do that quickly?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go on to, under old new business, we'll talk about Item C, which is review the sewer moratorium.
So you just asked for an update about the sewer moratorium because it's supposed to be expiring soon? And this was established, initially put it on in September, September 16th, and the board ratified that at the next meeting, the following meeting. So I did reach out to Doug and Greg Eldridge, who is the consultant that we work with out of Haley and Ward. And so what they've indicated is that they were going to, they needed to wait a little bit more until they could get better flow information before they could provide any kind of indication of capacity availability. And then they still need some more time to allow the Cedar Street bypass flow to go to Brackett, if you remember the last time. So last year, that, that gate valve was open, but the meters, the MWR, the MWRA meters didn't work, so we didn't have accurate flow information. So they need to extend that a little bit longer. So I'll talk to them a little bit more about how much longer we need to extend that and.
So when does it, when does it actually expire right now?
March of 2023.
Okay. So we'll probably put this on our next meeting agenda to discuss, and we'll have a better sense of the timeline.
Yeah, we'll have like a proposed extension date, you know, date till. So, and just to remind everybody, so that's currently impacting a couple of the developments that are in front of the planning board right now. So Homer Ave, so even though they're before the planning board, if they get a permit, if the sewer moratorium is still on, they can't build because they can't connect. Same thing with 301 Pond Street, the Shaws Plaza project.
But they can still go through the planning board process?
Yes.
And since that takes some time, generally speaking, they'll, at that point, then, you know, if the sewer moratorium is still, is still on, they can build because those, those were, those applications came in before the housing moratorium, correct?
Yep. So those, those two projects came in after the sewer moratorium was in place, but before the building moratorium was in place. So as they go through the planning board process, if those get approved, if the sewer moratorium is still in effect, they cannot build while it is still in effect.
Until the sewer moratorium is lifted.
Exactly.
So a question, Madam Chair, with respect to the, if the developer decides to put his own septic system in, does that negate the sewer moratorium issue?
Well, they wouldn't need sewer at that point in time. So yeah, they wouldn't be impacted by the sewer moratorium.
Okay.
But doing, I mean, doing a septic system of that magnitude, it would be very, very difficult.
That's an option that's available to the developer if he chooses to do so.
Yeah, especially downtown, given like, you know, the groundwater, the water table.
There's no groundwater there.
Like a swimming pool if it's feet deep. So, so yeah, that's, update on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. It is 7:13. I see folks online here, here for the, the dog hearing. Why don't I go ahead and, 7:14 now, I can read the hearing and, and open things up. So 7:15, we have a dangerous dog hearing, Jazzy, and an unnamed German Shepherd dog owned by Greg Lynch. This is a hearing concerning a nuisance issue of ongoing complaints against the Great Dane and black German Shepherd type dog owned by Mr. Lynch of 51 Alden Street, which dogs are alleged to be allowed to run unrestrained are a nuisance to passersby for allegedly attacking, causing injury in the most recent occurrence, which took place on January 24th, 2023. A hearing notice was hand delivered and also mailed to Mr. Lynch on January 26th, 2023. So at this point, I want to swear in all witnesses or anyone who is going to be presenting or might be presenting, if everyone, both on Zoom, and if you can make sure your cameras are on, if you're going to be preside, you know, making a statement, if you can raise your right hand and repeat the following. I swear the information I am about to provide.
I swear the information I'm about to provide.
Is the truth, the entire truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the entire truth, and nothing but?
So do we need people on Zoom to do it as well, the lawyer and the other?
So I see Mr. Lynch and Mr. Cohen, who I believe is representing Mr. Lynch. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Since Mr. Cohen and Mr. Lynch, if you are providing testimony or comment this evening, if I could ask you to do the same, could you please repeat the following?
Excuse me for a moment. As an attorney, I'm not going to take the oath because that just puts me in a position of being a witness if we were to appeal. So it's common at these hearings that I don't get sworn in for that reason. But Mr. Lynch absolutely should.
Okay. Mr. Lynch, are you?
Is he present?
Are you present there? I don't see, I don't see him. I see, I see the box, but I don't see.
Well, the box is there, but he doesn't have his camera on.
There it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Lynch, we are swearing in all witnesses who are, who are presenting or might be presenting evidence this evening. So I would ask you to do the same as the folks here in the room and to raise your right hand and repeat the following. I swear the information I'm about to provide.
You need to unmute.
You need to unmute yourself, Mr. Lynch.
And flip your count, and flip your camera again.
We, we can't see you. There you go. Now, now if you can unmute yourself. You're still muted.
Usually down at the bottom on the left-hand side, there's a little mic. There you go.
There we go.
There we go.
So if you could please raise your right hand and repeat the following. I swear the information I'm about to provide is the truth.
I swear the information I'm about to provide is the truth.
The entire truth and nothing but the truth.
The entire truth and nothing but the truth.
Great. Thank you very much. So we're going to talk to, we're going to have a presentation of evidence and background from our Animal Control Officer, Donna Walsh, who's here this evening. Donna, if you can come to the podium, please. And I know that in our packets, we have received quite a bit of information, but if you can go, go through everything with us, that would be great. Thank you.
So we, on the, I'm going to start with the most latest incident with the Brogans, which happened on January 24th. After that incident, I went back to my office and found the file on the Lynch's dog, Jazzy. And so there was quite a history, started dating back to 2020. Two incidents that went unreported by the dog owners that happened before April 18th, we believe sometime in March.
Excuse me, Donna. I don't want to interrupt your rhythm, but can you speak directly to this incident here first? Because I think that's what initiated this hearing.
Okay. So as of January 24th, 2023, Debbie Brogan was walking her dog, and she encountered, when she was walking up Alden Street, she encountered two dogs that came running out of the residence at 51 Alden Street. She indicated to me that the dogs were being let out of the fenced yard, unleashed, and into the house. And at that time, those dogs came after her dog. It's the second time it had happened. I guess a few months back, the same thing happened. So Debbie's dog Buster received some significant injury around his neck. He's an eight-pound dog. So it was touch and go for quite a few days. And so, once we got the history behind Jazzy, that's how we got here tonight. So dating back to 2020, April, we had an incident with Mr. Paul at Cirrus Apartments, where he encountered the dogs, apparently off-leash in the back of the building, Building 5. And his dog was attacked. And there was some injury, although not as significant as what happened on a couple of weeks ago. So they did seek vet care for their dog. That resulted in a citation for complaint of nuisance, and that we sent a letter stating that, you know, the dogs needed to be leashed at all times, and the managed company would not allow me to have access to post the door or speak with Mr. Lynch. So I had to hand everything over to the management company, and they delivered it. Those fines had since been paid. And then we went on to January 15th, 2021, we got another complaint of a dog attack involving Jazzy, and I guess Mr. Lynch's daughter was walking the dog and was, she was unable to control her. And Catherine Gardner's dog, Gracie, was attacked, and she received, was either bitten or scratched or both, and did require veterinary care as well. These incidents, like I said, were not as significant as what happened on the 24th. As a result, again, I wrote a letter and issued citations, and was handed over to the management company. She was actually telling, she told me that she was actually writing a letter to him as well, and she would deliver everything.
I think I'm off text.
And so that was.
What is this?
In January of 2021. And so after that, you know, I didn't know that they even moved. I hadn't heard anything until what happened.
So that's basically what we have. Thank you, Donna. Just procedurally, just, I realize that I had read the opening of the hearing, but we didn't take a vote to go into.
Motion to go into the dangerous dog hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So procedurally, Mr. Lynch, are you comfortable with us admitting Animal Control Officer Donna Walsh's testimony as she had presented it into the hearing?
I'd refer to my lawyer at this time.
Mr. Cohen?
We are, and we are, Greg, can you try to get your camera so you are on camera and muted when you're not speaking, please?
I, I was trying to figure it out, but I think I did. So tell me if this works.
Okay. But you should mute as well.
Am I muted now?
Nope.
No.
And we can't see you.
Okay. So you're muted now, Mr. Lynch. So that's.
Step forward.
Yep. Mr. Cohen, are you, are you comfortable with us admitting the testimony that Donna Walsh presented to us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So we do have Mr. and Mrs. Brogan here with us this evening, who's the owner of Buster. Would you like to give a statement?
I would, thank you. Hi, my name is Michael Brogan. I'm not a meeting kind of guy. I don't like meetings. Therefore, I will not be running for your slot. But I want to thank you for all the time and hours and effort that you put in because you'll never get that time back. So thank you, Steve.
Well, thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
On behalf of my wife and my dog, this was a horrendous incident. She had mentioned Jazzy and the other dog. Jazzy's a Great Dane, or at least a Great Dane mix. I haven't seen his pedicure. The other one was a German Shepherd. A few months ago, my wife was walking the dog on Alden Street. We tried to do it safely. We wear reflective vests at night. You may have probably seen us walking our dogs. Tried to do everything safely, do it right. She had, two years ago, had serious back surgery. She's got rods from her shoulders to her pelvis, 22 fasteners, 42 screws holding her back together. The first time this happened, the dogs came out. She was able to bend and pick up my dog and shield it from Jazzy. There was just that one dog at that time. The woman came and said, I'm sorry. My wife said, you have to keep your dog on a leash. You can't let that dog loose. She said, I was just bringing it from the pen into the house. She said, you can't leave it off-leash at all. It's an aggressive dog. The woman said, I'm sorry, it'll never happen again. On this instance, which happened on the 24th, my wife was walking the dog down Alden Street and had to stay kind of in the road because of the ice on the sidewalks. And both dogs came out of the yard at 51 Alden and immediately went after my dog. She tried to pick it up, and she fell. She couldn't pick up the dog. She was on the ground, and thankfully, the dogs didn't attack her. My dog received serious injury. She called me on the phone, and I went from my house on Main Street to Alden Street, picked her and the dog up, brought him home, checked him out. He was injured. He was bleeding, dried him off. And then I got back in my car and went back to Alden Street, where I spoke to Mr. Lynch. I have to say Mr. Lynch was not defensive. Well, I guess he was defensive. He wasn't aggressive. And I told him who I was and that I was going to request a dangerousness hearing before the board. I said, I want you to know eye to eye, man to man, that that's what I'm going to do. You have a dangerous, aggressive dog. And he said, I don't have an aggressive dog. I said, my dog is home hurt, and I have to take him to the emergency vet, and it's because of you. I said, you're irresponsible dog owner. He said, I'm not. I said, sir, if that dog chased my dog and went into the street, got hit by a truck, whose fault is that? That's your fault because you're not a responsible dog owner. That's how the conversation went. He knew I was going to come here, and that's what I'm doing. I thank you for the time and concern you're putting into this. This is a serious matter, and I'm into it for almost two grand right now, for veterinary bills, for care. And I still got another appointment Friday. So do you have any questions for me?
No, not at the moment.
Michael, Michael.
I thank you for your time. Michael.
Yeah. So my understanding is that the dog had to have stitches and a drain?
Yes.
And is that still?
The drain has been removed. It was causing him great discomfort. The reason for the drain is because when the dog bit, it pulled the muscle and skin away from the dog skeleton. So they had to make sure that an abscess wasn't formed beneath it. So they had to drain off fluid. I guess fluid will collect there. But yeah, that's, that's correct. The drain's been removed. The stitches were removed on Friday.
How's he doing? How's he doing now?
He's doing better. He's getting more comfortable. But it was, he was on a lot of medication for a long time to get this, to get to this point. But he's doing better with a lot of care and love from my wife. Okay. Thank you. Any questions, counsel?
Thank you for asking. I don't have any right now.
So Mr. Lynch, Mr. Cohen, would you like to make a statement for the record?
Yes, please. I'll, and I'm still trying to work with Greg on the technical difficulty. But, all right. So I'm representing Greg. My law office, Boston Dog Lawyers, we represent responsible pet owners. So then why am I here? Because I do believe he's a responsible pet owner. I think if we can implement certain safeguards and protocols for him in an order, then it's up to him. He has to either follow them or then, or face the consequences. I'm asking that certainly Jazzy, who's the Great Dane, and I sent a couple of pictures to the board so you could see them. The other dog's name is Pebbles. So previously, we heard about incidents in, before this, they did not involve dog Pebbles. It was a different dog, Rocco, that's not around anymore. So I'm hoping that the board could see how we could get to, to deeming the dogs dangerous, dogs who go off property and fight another dog, certainly fit Massachusetts definition of what a dangerous dog is. It doesn't mean they've always done it, but it fits the definition. And that way, that, as the board understands, would trigger the remedies that you could put in place. I just want to explain a couple of things about the Animal Control Officer's testimony and why I'm troubled by it. It's embellished and it's not accurate. And I expect from our animal control professionals that they will tell the facts as they are and not come in with an agenda. Now, there's certainly, there's no doubt about what happened. But the things that she says in there are not true. She said that the dog lost a pound. The dog weighed 8.2 pounds on January 24th, and it weighed 7.9 pounds on January 27th. So that's not a pound. It's these little things that they plant in your head that make you think that these dogs are monsters and should be euthanized. She also goes on to say that significant injuries to his neck and shoulders, that's not what's reflected in the vet records. What's also not reflected in the vet records is any muscle tearing. That is just not what happened. Now, we know the dog had significant injuries, $2,000, which my client will pay. And I know the board can't necessarily order that, but he'll, he'll pay that and he'll pay whatever for any other appointments that he has. This, these dogs, the biggest problem I'm finding with this setup for Mr. Lynch is that he has a fenced in area, he has a pen, and the dogs have never escaped from that area. The problem is, he goes from his house to his pen, and the pen to the house, and he just expects the dogs are going to follow him. So they're not leashed. They're not, they're, they're not controlled properly between, while the dogs are outside in between. That's unacceptable. And I think if the board were to issue an order that has at least one thing in there, that the dogs have. that the dogs have to be muzzled and leashed and moved one at a time from the house to the yard, one dog per one adult, then this wouldn't happen again. And if it does happen again, then he faces the consequences. Also, these dogs, if he's walking them off his property, one dog per one adult, so no person should ever be walking two. His daughter was the previous problem, but she, she's not involved in the most recent, so she doesn't live at home, and she doesn't, she'll never walk the dogs again. And muzzled and leashed when off the property. The fencing, despite what the animal control officer says, has been adequate. He rents there, but there's, the dogs have never, never escaped. He has to pay better attention and not let his guard down. If the board would deem the dogs dangerous and put in a couple of, or however many remedies you wanted to, the thing that we have now that, that wasn't in place previously for Mr. Lynch is the consequences. This chapter, 140, 157, I then sent the board, 157 capital A, and 158. Those are the two that say, if you don't follow an order, you've got criminal problem, you can do time, you're going to lose your dog, and you're going to pay a fine. And actually, in 158, they can take the, you could take the dog and euthanize it even without a hearing. So why is he going to take this one more serious? Because it's the first hearing he's ever had on it. And in speaking with him, in lecturing him somewhat, I just believe that he understands that these dogs need constant management. If he can unmute and come on, what he will say or would say is that he is sorry. You know, he, he is what Mr. Brogan said, he's a decent guy who is sorry about it, but he has to do something about it in addition to paying for it. I think he understands what he needs to do about it. Thank you.
And I absolutely do. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Can hear you, but we can't see you.
Is there anything you want to? Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Lynch?
For two years, there was no problem. This is a fluke.
Well, whoever's talking is not sworn in, so please don't speak.
No, I mean, we, we have, we have lived here for just over two years. There's been no issues whatsoever, and, you know, it happened. I, I take responsibility, and, you know, it's not going to happen again. I, I realize what I need to do is constant management on the dogs.
And if I could point one other thing out to the board that I missed, there's been no human aggression here. There's, even though there's no prior reports from animal control, or just, just a letter, it's a hearsay, there's been no allegation of human aggression. In fact, in the most recent incident on January 24th, the poor woman was down on the ground, which is a very vulnerable position to be around with two larger dogs, and they didn't even pay attention to her. They didn't go after her, they didn't try to bite her. And that's because, despite what the animal control officer says, a dog can either be human aggressive or dog aggressive. And if you're dog aggressive, it certainly doesn't parlay into, it lends itself that you're human aggressive. So we know the dogs aren't human aggressive, and I, I think that's an important point when we look at the animal control officer's recommendation to kill both dogs, that there's been no human aggression. And it's just my experience that you just don't kill dogs for, for dog bites unless their owner is in violation of an order.
And I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Also, you know, after, after the initial attack, you know, the dog was out, I don't know, maybe 10 feet from, from her. My concern was her. We were out on the street for probably three to five minutes. The dog's still off-leash and in a controlled state. She went and she sat on my front step. I was trying to ask her to come into the light so I could see her dog and make sure she was okay. She then walked off. She was concerned that the dogs were still going to attack her, but I, you know, healed the dogs, and they came, and I put them back. So this whole thing, you know, was very fast. And, you know, I'm, again, I'm sincerely sorry that it happened, but this is, this is the truth of it.
Before, before we do that, Donna, do you have anything else that you would like to add for the record? Is there anything else that you would like to include? I'm just, I'm asking. You don't, you don't need to, but just asking. Okay. So, Mr. Brogan, if you would like to make a statement?
I have a copy of the medical report given by Boston West Emergency Vet Innenic. That's a 24-hour emergency veterinary place. And what it says, they have a word for it, and I don't know what it is, but it said, just one second here. There was a large pocketing extending over his left shoulder, chest region, but no other open wounds. That large pocketing is where the muscle and stuff was pulled away. That's why, and it says right here, that's why they put the, the drain in. So I am under oath, he's not under oath, and I'm telling you the truth. There was, that muscle was torn away. So I need you to consider that. The second thing, I just want to clarify Mr. Lynch's statement. When my wife was on the front step, it sounded like he was saying that my dog was unleashed, when in fact, his dog was. My dog was on leash the whole time.
Oh, the leash got pulled out of her hair.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the board for questions, is there anyone else here to speak either in favor or in opposition? Okay, seeing, seeing none. I'm going to open it up to the board for, for questions. Steve, can go ahead.
So a couple of questions for, for Mr. Lynch. I guess, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you made the statement that, that, not for, I'm sorry, this is for Mr. Cohen. I'm asking these questions to Attorney Cohen. I think you made the, the statement that you, you deemed Mr. Lynch as a responsible dog owner. So I'd like to know how you came to that conclusion, and, you know, it seems counter to a lot of the information that we've been provided, that, that stems from reports back from 2020. So that's number one. Number two, number two is, you appeared before this board not that long ago with a, with a situation where a dog aggressive dog mauled a woman trying to get at the dog. Woman was holding a dog and got injured by another animal trying to get at her dog. So how can you, how can you, I guess, ensure me that something like that wouldn't happen in a situation like that? I mean, I, I would seem, you know, as, as Mr. Lynch just stated, these things happen so quick. So I, I guess those two things seem to, just don't jive with me in terms of kind of the, the public safety components here?
Sure. So my statement was, I represent responsible pet owners. Sometimes those responsible pet owners become responsible because I'm representing them. And my feeling with Mr. Lynch is that after talking to him and looking at, at these, these basically lazy scenarios where he didn't make sure the dog was, the dogs were contained from the yard to the house, that's an easy fix. And so most people who come to me are not, don't come to me as the responsible pet owner, but this, these types of things get them to be. So my assessment of him is, he understands it. He understands the consequences. And as I said, it's those consequences, if it's not death, that would, if nothing else, that's what's hanging over his head, that that's going to keep him responsible, if nothing else, if nothing else is. And as far as, I just want to deal with what is. And what is, is that this woman did not get bit. And what is, is that in the other cases regarding Jazzy, the people did not get bit. So the what ifs of, I don't remember when I was here, but the what, what ifs, you look very familiar, but I think it's the new board. But, um, so the what is, I'm just going by what, everybody, sorry, I don't know. The what is, is that this dog didn't bite anybody. And when, neither one of them did, and they had the opportunity and they didn't. So I'm just going by that.
And I, I appreciate that. I mean, you're right, we can't speculate, but, you know, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that something like that could occur. I, just to follow up on the question about Mr. Lynch and your determination suddenly becoming a responsible dog owner because he interacted with you, why wasn't he able to become a responsible dog owner after interacting with our animal control officer?
Well, I think if you look at the fact that nothing happened from January of 2021, I believe, to January of 2023, he had some responsibility. Every one of us who have a dog can be a better dog manager tomorrow than we can today. I'm horrible with my dog. She gets away with murder because of her big brown eyes. I need to discipline her more tomorrow than I do today. If he was a responsible pet owner, we would have actually had animal control reports from January, from 2020 and 2021. You'll notice, there were no hearings, there were no reports from this. There's an undated letter that I received and a dated letter. She, what she said, if she made recommendations to him, I think she did with a muzzle. This board is not animal control. I, I'm just saying, it's, it's an unfair fact of life that animal control officers are not heard until they come to these hearings finally. And it's the frustration for someone like ACO Walsh is that she did try to explain this to him, she did try to get him on board, she didn't punish him with the hearing, and it didn't sink in appropriately, so she has to get to this stage.
Fair enough. We'll make our own determination surely, based on all the information we have. My last, last comment, and then I'll, I'll let the rest of my colleagues speak, is you're, you're agreeing, you're stipulating that this is a dangerous dog. Am I correct?
Yeah. If, by the definition of the statute, it can just be one occurrence off the property, victim wasn't teasing, tormenting, trespassing, her dog was on a leash, I mean, there's really no, I believe so. I believe Jazzy fits the definition.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm offering that up because we have to be credible too. And that, deal with what is, I think that's what is with this dog.
Anybody else?
I can, I can ask my questions if
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll ask mine.
So I have a few questions for Mr. Lynch. So first of all, is there any dispute about the events that Animal Control Officer Walsh had, had stated about the incidents that happened in March of 2020, in April of 2020, and January of 2021?
Nothing happened in January 2020.
I know that they were, they were not huge issues. They, there was nothing that came of it. I did get, like my lawyer said, recommendations for the muzzle. We soon after, maybe, you know, six or eight months after, we moved out of the Cirrus, and we now rent the property here at 51 Alden Street. We got it solely based on the fenced backyard, the privacy that we have, you know, that's, that's really all I can say on that.
So the, the incidences that happened, the prior incidents, which I know we're not really here to, to focus on today, but I think it's important, there were two other incidents that needed veterinary care for these animals. Did you pay for, reimburse, did you reimburse the owners for the veterinary care that they received?
I did. I paid all the vet bills. It wasn't that much. You know, I, again, you know, when speaking with these owners, you know, they understood to some extent, you know, how sorry I was, and, you know, I want to do the right thing. And, and, you know, I paid the bills and we moved on, and it was not a huge issue. You know, just, I think my daughter was mentioned in, in something that my lawyer mentioned. She no longer lives here. She, when we bought, when we got this apartment, she ended up getting a job and moving in with her boyfriend, and, you know, her life's moving on. But she's just a young girl then. It was, she was 16. Today, she's 19. Dog, both dogs are on the leash. I think Jazzy's dew claw scraped the dog's back. It was a scrape. I wouldn't even call it a laceration, like through the whole epidermis, so to speak, but it, they brought it and got treated, and, you know, this is what we did. We paid for the bill and said we're sorry, and I was at the pool area with him, and, you know, with the owner, and, you know, there was no hard feelings. So, you know, again, this is where we're at, so.
Are your dogs fixed?
Jazzy is not fixed. Pebbles is fixed and chipped.
So have you muzzled Jazzy since Animal Control Officer Walsh had, had?
While we were at the Cirrus, we always muzzled her. When we moved out, there was really no need because there was no interaction with other people and dogs, and, you know, people walking out from doorways as my wife's walking down the, the sidewalk, and, you know, all of a sudden, people are walking out the door. I mean, it's, you know, it, it was a different world, living in an apartment complex. But I can tell you that my dog, Jazzy, has been on an elevator as people entered the elevator with their dogs, and there's no issue. You know, so really, you know, there's a thing about leash aggression. Jazzy does not have it. Other dogs, if they have it and they get excited, she will respond, and she is a big dog. And this is, you know, and I'm not, again, this was, these are separate instances, okay? When, when my daughter had Jazzy with the first occurrence over at Cirrus, the dog was on the leash. Both dogs got together, both dogs are on the leash. The boxer reared up and got aggressive. She got aggressive back, but there was no biting. It was a dew claw that scratched the dog.
So can I just interrupt? The question was, it was a simple question. Did you muzzle the dogs? So you answered.
At the Cirrus is yes. Yes, we, we continue to muzzle the dog at Cirrus.
We got it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yolanda?
I'm going to just do a, two follow-up questions to what our chairperson talked. So the question was, do you muzzle the dog? And you said, when you're at Cirrus, you do, but when you take them for a walk now, do you muzzle them?
No, there was, at Cirrus, there was a lot of dogs, lot of activity, you know, for instance, my wife
I'm going to pause you for a second. I'm sorry, everybody, but in the interest of time, okay? It was a simple question. Do you muzzle the dogs now?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right, that's all she asked. I'm sorry, but I know you have another
That's fine. That's fine. My second question slash concern is, it, it seems like there is lack of control that you may have over your dogs. And that's, that's the concerning part, right? You, you talked about how it was, they were leaving the pen in area and trying to get them into the house, and that's when they ran out and attacked the Brogans' dog. So it sounds like it's happened twice now. Have you, between the first time and this time
Where's the first time? At 51 Alden? What are we talking about?
There was, in the statement that Mr. Brogan made back a couple of months ago, they were walking by your house, and she was able to pick up the dog when your dogs came out, but there was no real incident. But the dogs did, or at least one of them came running toward her. So
I, I was not present, so I can't answer to that.
Well, is the person who is present, who was present there and able to get sworn in, and, I, I, actually, I don't, I don't need that to happen. My question is this. Between that incident, even though you yourself wasn't there, someone was there, and the indication was that it was between moving the dogs from the pen to the house that they ran after her, and this time, it was between moving the dogs from the pen to the house that they got out of your control and went out to the dog on the street?
Well, we can swear my wife in right now. She's telling me it didn't happen. She's scratching her head right now.
Okay, so even with this incident then? That's fine. I'll leave it at this incident. Have you considered, based on this incident, how you're going to control your dogs between the pen and the house so this doesn't happen again?
Well, again, we put the dogs on a leash, and we bring them out and put them in the backyard. That's what we've been doing for a couple of years. In this particular instance, it was inclement weather. In this particular instance, it was inclement weather. I bent down to pick up some mail. I took them off. They went in the backyard. And I was trying to get mail that was stuck to the driveway. And then this is, this is what happened. I am very sorry that this happened. I, I'm not fast enough and agile enough to stop them. Because, you know, again, it was 50 feet away, so.
That still doesn't answer the question of if you have now considered...
It's my fault. I let the dogs off the leash.
Okay.
Okay. And, and, you know, and I'm, it was, I, I don't know what time of night it was. If, if someone can tell me what time of night it was. Now, and, and it was literally, I want to say frozen streets, you know, very inclement weather is what I remember. But again, this is, you know, so I wasn't really concerned with anyone walking, so to speak, due to the time of night and the inclement weather.
Okay, so I'm going to go back.
It's my bad and it's my fault.
So I'm just going to ask, have you now considered, every time you move the dogs from the house to the pen, how are you going to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, absolutely. On the leash, one dog at a time.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
First, just a question one of my colleagues suggested about, about the fencing. So Officer Walsh thinks that the fencing is not adequate in its current state. Do you, as a renter, have the ability to improve that fencing? If that's something that we think should be done? And also, I understand that under these guidelines, you're also required to have substantial insurance. Is that something you're prepared to have and the ability to have?
Well, I'll defer to my lawyer on that. Because, you know, to me, the dogs have never got out of the fence when, when the gate was locked. The gate, the front, the front gate, the, the chain link fence is not that high. I am confident that probably both dogs could jump over it. They have never have. And they have been out there all day while people were walking by and they bark. And they, you know, do what dogs do. But they've never breached the fence ever.
Greg, the question he had for you was, are you, he asked you this question. So this is the answer. I'll help with the insurance. But as a renter, the question was, as a renter, do you have the ability to improve the fence?
I would say no.
Regarding the insurance, there's two ways he can get it. He can get renters insurance. Oftentimes renters insurance covers more breeds and more incidents than homeowners insurance does. At the same time, if he can't get that because there's been an incident with Jazzy, he can get, there's standalone insurance policies for dog bite liability. There's, there's dozens of agents now who write that. I mean, for, because the dogs have had no human bites, the, the insurance should be affordable to him to get the $100,000. And after this, if the dogs are spared their life, I will certainly, and if they're ordered to get insurance, lead him there.
Okay, thank you. I just, some of the other, neither of you mentioned training as a, as a possible method for, in this case? And I don't know, Officer Walsh, you stated in your report that you don't think either of these dogs are amenable to training. And I, and Attorney Cohen, you or your client did not offer that as a potential solution? So I wonder if, if someone's willing to talk a little bit about training? In the past, we have mandated training for dangerous dogs?
I was surprised to see the comment that the dogs are untrainable considering the person making the statement has never met the dogs and has never evaluated them. As far as the training goes, absolutely, they should have more training to, even just to, to get more obedience training with, with Greg. He's had them for a few years. They still listen to certain things, but training should be ongoing. The reason I didn't raise it here was because under the law, sometimes we'll ask for nuisance. And then under nuisance, the board has all these, it's a, you can do so many different things. Under dangerous right now, there's no provision, and I'm on a committee to change that, but there's no provision under dangerous that you, you can order it. You can suggest it. I mean, you can certainly order it. He's just going to do it. But under the seven options, the state doesn't list training as an option. So I'm, I'm telling you, I think it, the dog, it's dangerous, so then ordering training doesn't fit.
All right, thank you. And Officer Walsh, can you just tell us a little bit about why you made that recommendation that they're untrainable? That's a rare one from you, I have to say.
It's not really that they're untrainable. It's, training is only as good as the dog owner, first of all. Second of all, this behavior has gone on now for several years, from 2020 till now. And I'm not convinced that, you know, they're going to be able to follow through with that type of...
Can I ask a follow-up question while she's there? Except that according to your records, there has been no incident from January 1st of 21 until this January.
The Brogans said that there was a second incident, which they're denying.
A couple of months ago. Okay. But there's no record of it, right? There was no complaint made?
No.
There was no, so there's been no complaint against these dogs since 2021 until now? So for two years, apparently, or from what we can tell, things have gone okay. Correct? Okay, thank you.
And also, just as a quick follow-up while you're there too. So the second dog, Pebbles, this is the first incident with Pebbles, correct? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Just another, just another, in your report, you say that the owner has not been forthcoming with simple tasks of giving rabies information and information on the black shepherd. Has that been remedied now?
It has. It took seven days. I finally got the rabies certificate yesterday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
Donna, if you, if you don't mind, thank you for the clarification. What are the dates on those rabies certificates? Are they recent or were they done prior to this incident? I'm just rather curious.
They, oh, no, they're not recent.
They're not recent?
No, they were already vaccinated.
They were vaccinated. Okay, thank you. And Pebbles, though being the, I'm not, I know that Jazzy did, or some of the biting did, was Pebbles involved in the actual attack itself, in biting? Okay. So the shepherd was involved in the biting as well?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't see that in the report. I may have missed it in my, in my haste to get through all this information. Okay, thank you. But I do have additional questions for Attorney Cohen.
Joe, can I just ask one question while we're... So should we be deeming both dogs dangerous? Is that your...
In my opinion, they're both dangerous.
In your recommendation, okay.
Because they're feeding off of one another.
Okay, okay. Just to clarify. Thanks.
In your, in your opening statement, you made some, you made some serious allegations regarding our animal control officer lying. I, I take serious exception to that, seeing that you're not here in person. So granted, you're, you're here on Zoom, but I would have thought that both of you, you and your client, would have deemed this important enough to be here in person, one. That's number one.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to bring COVID to you. I got my shingles too yesterday, if you need to know. So if you've ever had the shingle shot, it wipes you out. It's enough that I'm even here. So please.
I'm 68 years old. Believe me, I can tell you. I know what shingles shots are.
Okay, Joe, let's...
What a dumb statement that was.
No, it wasn't a dumb statement.
Let's, let's just...
I had full intention of being there, but on the advice of my lawyer, he told me the Zoom would be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for being honest. I appreciate that.
And, and another thing, you mentioned the dogs feeding off each other. I adopted Pebbles in South Carolina three years ago. I rehomed her. The owner who had her, he, his circumstance has changed. And he called me and I took her back a few months ago. So the dogs aren't feeding off each other. They barely know each other, but they know each other, love each other.
Okay, I didn't make that statement, but thank you for that clarification. In your testimony, and I'm not sure if it was you or, or your attorney, you mentioned the word "pen". Are you referring to the backyard because it's fenced off? Or do you legitimately have a fenced-in pen area for your animals to be in?
No, it is a, it's a fenced backyard, probably 60 by 40, six-foot stockade fence and chain link from the Butters' fence to my garage with a, with a door that locks.
Okay. The picture that I have, I just see the, the stockade fence. I don't see the chain link fence. So, yeah, now, the chain link is what, five feet maybe? Six feet?
Yeah. And, and the dogs have, have been left out. We had construction going on over the summer and the dogs have been left out in the backyard while people were working in the house all day with no issues.
Okay. It looks like it's a shady area. They got a bunch of trees on, on the surrounding area. So they, so they're not...
And we got a shed, we got a, we got a little shed in the back that, you know, the dogs can go into, you know, if, you know, if they want to. But, you know, generally, they, they just lay on the grass.
Okay. The, the reason why I asked that is because I was going to make a suggestion about using a tether to your backyard. So that way, you know, having your dogs getting loose on a leash, going from the backyard to your, to the interior of your home would be less, would be less of an issue at, at that stage of the game. Is that something you...
I don't know how that would work. I mean...
It's easy to show how it would work.
It's 20 feet. I take the dog on a leash, as I have. You know, again, this, this night was an anomaly.
Okay. My, again, my, my concern is that, you know, the, the recommendation that's being presented is not something that I, I take lightly. I take it seriously. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we, we do what we need to do for the benefit of the entire community, your neighborhoods, and anybody that walks through your neighborhood that resides in town or is visiting in that area. And again...
Again, there's no, there's no human aggression whatsoever. If the dogs were in the car, you could reach right in and pet them, where there are plenty of other dogs that wouldn't let you do that, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll take your word for that, but I'm not going to be an experiment and put my hand through that window. Okay? Lastly, again, and I will address this to Attorney Cohen. You and I haven't got along too well, but I just, you know, you had your opportunity to speak and you said it's such a stupid question. Your, your initial comment about the size of the, the dog, could you go back and reiterate what you just said? Because I, I had some issue with that. I couldn't understand what you were trying to tell me.
Okay, let me clarify. Now, I just want to make sure, now, you're Facebook friends with Mr. Brogan, right?
I'm friends with a lot of people.
Did you have a conversation with Mr. Brogan before this hearing?
I went to school with Mr. Brogan, but what does that have to do with this hearing?
Joe, we didn't have a conversation.
No, we never spoke about this. This is the first time I've seen him with respect to this. So if you want to play games, if, if you're making a ledge...
So, so I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop this right now, Mr. Cohen. You need to watch yourself. And Joe, we're going to, we're going to just stop this, this entire...
Train of conversation.
Yeah. I think, I think it's better for everyone.
So let me clarify about the, the weight thing. Because my, my concern about the animal control officer and the lack of veracity, as I pointed out, and maybe I'm not in front of the table pointing it out, but I'll go wherever you need me to go to point it out. She makes it clear in her report, she's to the board, why you should kill these two dogs. One of the reasons is because this dog, the injured dog, lost a pound. And it's, and she makes point of saying it weighs eight pounds. And from the day it happened, January 24th, to January 27th, it lost an entire pound. I mean, that's 12% of its body weight. So she said this was a really serious injury. Except the vet records don't say that. They say the dog weighed 8'2" and then it weighed 7'9". That's .3. I'm just saying, why can't we get to the right decision the right way and not care, and care that she's not right in what she said and not care that I'm not there in port, in person? And the other two allegations I made about her, that she said things were wrong, is she said in her report, the Brogans' dog suffered significant injuries to his neck and shoulders, indicating that the dogs were trying to kill it. That is absolutely not true. She has no training in animal behavior. The neck is where the dogs go for each other. That's why the neck is extra thick in dogs. And these two dogs, she wants to tell you how big they are. One's 120, one's the other. They didn't kill the dog. They didn't kill it. So we know that true dangerous dogs with this high, high drive would kill it.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, can I, I'm going to interrupt you because you answered my question with respect to, because I didn't understand what you were going through with respect to the weight loss. I couldn't hear that, okay? So I didn't understand where you were going with that, with that response. But now that I have a better understanding of it, I appreciate where you're, where you're coming from, okay? All right? Are we good with that?
We're good.
Okay. I'm all, I'm done, Matt. I'm sure. I mean, I have much more, but...
But you're good? Sure, absolutely.
She, we need to swear, right?
Yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to swear. Okay, okay.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
I just want to say a couple of things. I think that maybe Mr. Lynch and his lawyer are under the impression that we would want their dogs put down. That is absolutely not what I want. I love dogs. I just, this was horrific. And to say that they weren't trying to kill my dog, they were trying to kill my, my dog because I was right at street level. They were trying to kill my dog, both dogs. And I do think they fed off each other. Okay, that's the first thing. The second thing is I did have an incident when I was walking my dog. It was one dog. It was the Great Game, came running out and I picked my dog up. And the dog was definitely growling and I, I felt like it would attack my dog. There was a woman there. I don't know who she was, whether she was a wife or a daughter. I don't know. And I said to her, you've got to have this dog on leash. And she said, I'm just bringing my dog from the pen to the house. And I said, that doesn't matter. This is a small dog. And if your dog's going to go after dogs, you have to have it on leash all the time. And she said to me, it won't happen again. I believed her. I thought she was sincere. And otherwise, I would have never gone down Alden again. Anyway, but I, I don't want to see her, their dogs put down or anything. I just want to know that this will never happen to another innocent little dog like mine. Because he doesn't deserve it. He didn't do anything wrong. And that's all I care about. That's it. End of story. I just don't want, I want to know it would never happen again. And I don't, Mr. Lynch was very nice. I was just very scared and saw my dog die.
Well, thank you. Can I, can I ask you a question? I'm just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, yeah, if, if you're, if you're okay with that and maybe, maybe Michael would... You've, you've said you don't want these dogs to be euthanized. Do you have, and you don't need to answer this if you don't feel it, but do you have suggestions or recommendations for us?
I don't know. I mean, I would hope that muzzle and leash would be enough. But my husband and I have talked about it. And what if they didn't do this? Because he seemed very nonchalant to me that night, just saying, well, I, you know, I dropped my mail. And, and he was telling the dogs, heal, heal, stop. And I was saying, just please grab your dogs off my dog. And he was very nonchalant. And I just felt like if that had been my dogs, I would have been horrified that they did that. I, I don't know. I just, you know, I wish that whatever happens, whatever the board does, I just want to know this will never, ever happen again. You know, if right now, he's feeling like, oh, God, I got to keep my dogs on a leash and I got to put a muzzle on him. And in six months, he thinks, well, you know, this once, it's at night or whatever. My dog, for some strange reason, likes to walk late at night. I don't know why. And other people's dogs might. I just don't want to ever, ever know that this could happen again and that Michael and I didn't do everything we could to prevent it. And Donna Walsh, as far as our animal control officer goes, no one works harder. No one's got more integrity. So this lawyer, whoever you may be, you have no idea. Everyone in this town knows. So I also want to say that. And Dawn, I don't, Donna has been so good through all this. I can't even tell you. But anyway, I, I don't know how... anyway, I, I don't know how that we can be sure, but I, I would just hate to see that happen to his dogs, I, I know what it's like to lose a dog, and, you know, if, if there was any way we could absolutely know that he is going to follow through and never let it lapse, and I don't know that there's a way, if there is, that's all I want.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do you need to ask?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, just have, before I get muzzled myself-
Michael has a question, too.
I, I wanted to ask Mr. Lynch, you said, in, in reading one of the reports, you were using words like heel and things of that nature, which suggests to me that you've had some, or you went to some training with, with one of your dogs, either Jazzy or, and or Pebbles, is that, is that, am I assuming that's correct, or is this just something you were doing on your own?
No, my dogs are, are trained, but again, this was a one-off, they were off-leash, the other times, they were on leash. If, you know, she mentioned I was nonchalant, after the altercation, my concern was her, I helped her up, I took her phone from her pocket, I helped her call her husband, you know, my concern was her. The dogs were no longer in attack mode, so to speak.
Miss, the, the board member's question wasn't about that, he asked you about training, cause it seemed, he said, if I'm paraphrasing, but he said, "You've done some training with the dogs," I think he was asking if you've done training with the dogs.
Yes, I mean, I've, I've pet dogs my whole life, I use the clicker, I use a prong collar, and, you know, I, my dogs are trained, you know, you know, they, they sit, they sit pretty, they count, you know.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be against having additional training if, if the board decides to add this to a list of requirements?
Well, you know, my lawyer did mention that the dog officer has never met the dog, which she has not.
But if I can jump in for a second, that, again, Greg, that wasn't the question, his question is really, it's really a sincere question he's asking you, he just wants to know one thing, if the board says, and actually, even if they don't, the board doesn't, I've already told you this, would you get some train?
Of course.
That's the question, I believe.
Of course.
Would you get train-
If there's a curriculum that I could follow and-
Is it a yes or a no?
Absolutely yes, yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Cohen, for-
Okay. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to beat around the bush on that, I misunderstood the question a little bit, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, I, I think I've got a, a more straightforward question, I just wanna go back to the rabies vaccination, so you said it was vaccinated a long time ago, the dog was vaccinated a long time ago?
No, the rabies certificate, they weren't, they weren't, I don't believe they were done, like, since this bite, that was the, what I thought the question was, was, were they recent enough so that they were done after the bite?
Correct.
Correct.
So the only-
No, I don't think so.
So, cause the only information we have here is that the vaccination expired in June of 2022.
Right, we have, let me, let me get them off my-
So for Jazzy, there's a, in your packet, the rabies certificate, Jazzy was vaccinated three-twenty-six-twenty-two, vaccination expires three-twenty-six-twenty-five, I believe she, she was thinking, cause some people don't vaccinate till after something happens, so I think that's what she was trying to say.
That was the implication of the question, did, did the vaccination happen because of the, and that's not the case, based on-
And is the dog licensed?
No, not as of today.
It's not licensed?
The dogs are not licensed.
They have until April to be licensed, correct?
They have until April.
Were they licensed in twenty-twenty-two?
Jazzy, Jazzy is licensed.
Yeah.
Jazzy's licensed. Do you have a license?
Okay.
Where's the license, you have it, any?
That's okay, we don't need to see it.
We're, we're okay.
So, I have one more question, I could, so Attorney Cohen, just to clarify on the training component, because we all seem to be, consider that an important part of the conditions here, now, I, we agree that, that it doesn't, you know, the, the requirement for training doesn't show up in the regulations, in theory, we can't order that, but I, personally, my recommendation is we make that part of our ordered conditions, and if, if your client wants to appeal that, by all means, but it sounds like everybody is in concert with the additional training?
I would say this, if, if the board orders training, that would, we would not appeal the order because, and, and use training, if the board orders training, that means the board is keeping the dogs alive, and that's the goal. So if training's in there, we will not appeal, because training's in there and the statute doesn't call for it.
Fair enough, thank you.
It's agreed to stipulation.
So I have one more question for Animal Control Officer Walsh, quick question, so if we were to order conditions for, for this dog as a dangerous dog, or both dogs as a dangerous dog, from an enforcement, from an enforcement perspective, would you be able to actively enforce those conditions before another, like, I don't wanna wait until there's another incident before we make sure that he's doing what he should be doing, so I'm, so I, I'm, can you kinda go into a little bit about what that would look like for you?
So for me, I would wanna set up an appointment and, first of all, check the fencing to make sure that it's adequate, because when I did go by, it looked, the stockade looks older, and I could see daylight through it, so I just need to make sure that it's gonna hold to good-sized dogs. Other than that, I don't know how, know whether he was enforcing, whether, you know, he was using the, the tethering law, the leash law, to get the dogs in and out of the pen, unless we were to actually see it.
Okay.
And any other conditions that you put on there, we obviously would work with the Lynch's.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sure.
Through his attorney, right? Him, his attorney?
Counsel, I don't know if you allow your client to answer this, you had other, he's had other incidents where he's paid vet bills, does he plan on paying my vet bill, or do we need to go to court over that, that's all I know?
Perhaps you didn't hear earlier, but, yeah, he says he's gonna pay your vet bill.
Okay, thank you.
He said that early on.
Yeah, he did say it.
Yeah, Mr. Lynch said it early on.
Okay, okay, so unless anyone else has any further questions, we have-
Close the hearing?
We, well, let me just ask a quick question before we go ahead and, and close the hearing, so, we can either deliberate and take this under consideration and vote tonight, or we can continue the hearing to our next meeting, and, so I just wanna kinda take the temperature before we, before we would close the hearing, in case there was more information we needed.
You know, it seems to me that we've got enough of a, kind of a consensus here, and, you know, I will say, just, you know, hearing from, from the Brogans about their position relative to euthanizing the dog, I mean, I would be personally very challenged to go that route, and, you know, I wouldn't, but, that being said, it seems like we have consensus in terms of not going that route, deeming both dogs dangerous, you know, applying some training component to it, so I, I personally, I think we can condition this tonight, and, and I think we can put some timeframes to this, maybe, so if, you know, in terms of, let's say, contracting for training, at least some acknowledgement that the Lynch's have, have contracted training within the next thirty days, and whatever other things we want to impose, we should have some timeframes.
We'll go through, yeah, we'll go through all the, the, the options, the statutory options.
The only question I have, Madam Chair, is, he answered, he, he didn't think he could do anything about the fencing, so I don't know if there's any, so if we could talk about, I don't know if there's a point to getting that clarified, that he could do something, or-
Except that there's been no indication-
Has there ever been a breach in the fence?
That, right, I was gonna say, there's been no indication that they've breached the fence, right, the, the indications of when they get out is between the house and going into the yard.
Right, but I thought we were also discussing possibly having Donna review the fencing and negate to make sure they're adequate, and, so I don't know, I think we could talk about that, maybe we don't need to-
Yeah, I don't know that we need, for me, I don't know that I need to go there, because there's been no indication that they've breached the fence, right, some dogs, because of how they've been trained, they see a fence, and they don't even try to go over it, because they, you know, since they were a puppy, they were taught-
All right, yeah, I was, I was just bringing it up in the, in the, in the possibility we may wanna continue to get more information, but if, if we don't think it's significant enough to continue it for that purpose, I'll, you know, I'll pass on that.
Okay.
I move that we close the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have closed the hearing, that passes five-zero, so I think we have two, two things first, we need to decide, we need to determine that these dogs are dangerous dogs first. So under general law, one-forty, chapter one-thirty-six-A defines dangerous dog, and one that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified threat of physical injury or death, a person, death, a person or to a domestic or owned animal. So, I would say, and then, then there's, there's other things, however, general law, chapter one-forty, subsection one-fifty-seven-A provides, a no dog should be deemed dangerous, one, solely based upon growling or barking, two, based upon the breed of the dog, or three, if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person, and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate to any of the following circumstances, the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic animal, or a person from attack or assault, two, the person who was attacked or threatened by the dog was committing a crime upon the person or property of the owner or keeper of the dog, three, the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog, or four, at the time of the attack or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was kept apart from the public, and such person or animal was not authorized by the owner of the premises to be within such enclosure, including but not limited to a gated fenced-in area, if the gate was closed, whether locked or unlocked, provided however, that if a person is under the age of seven, it shall be a rebuttable presumption that such person was not committing a crime, provoking the dog, or trespassing. So, those are the definitions of a dangerous dog, I would say that both dogs meet the criteria of a dangerous dog, so if I could get a motion-
I move that we deem both Jazzy and-
Pebbles.
Pebbles as dangerous dogs, based on, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, so now that we've deemed them dangerous dogs, the statutory options for resolution are the following-
I don't know that we need to read all of them, I think. I, I think the couple of things based from here that I'd like to recommend and other, if, you know, comments, I think the idea that they need to be humanely restrained, that when leaving, from, anytime they leave the house, whether it's to go to the fenced-in yard or wherever, they must be on a leash, and the idea that they should be muzzled in public, just in case, that they do further training, and that within sixty days, they have further training scheduled, and that they get insurance should there be another incident. Those are my recommendations.
The other thing, I would add, Yolanda, the one-person-per-dog rule.
Yes, yeah, that would, yeah, one person per dog, that would make sense as well.
The only other thing I would, I don't think I'd add it, is the whole fence question, and if, you know, if, if Officer Walsh feels she could inspect the fence, and that would be something appropriate, because we are depending on that fence working for those dogs, so.
Yeah, I, I'd be comfortable with that as well, I mean, I, I realize that there hasn't been any incidents due to the, the backyard of the fence, but I think it's just a good extra step, if it takes, you know, a half an hour for you to interact and check it out, I think it's worth the time. The other thing, and maybe Attorney Cohen can, can chime in as well, in terms of, you know, neutering and microchipping, I think your client said that one of the dogs was not neutered or spayed, and, and one had microchipped, so it would seem like the, the Animal Rescue League recommends those kinds of actions with dogs, regardless of whether they're dangerous or not.
Right, both females, and Jazzy's not spayed yet.
Okay. So, you know, is, that's probably not something we can order?
It actually is.
Is it?
It's, it's point number six.
Unless they're trying to use her for, yeah, puppies, yeah, right, I don't know.
Well, we can, that's, that's for microchipping, right?
No, it's-
It's for both.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay, I would include that in the order as well.
Do we have, is that an effective technique for behavior intervention?
Well, the American Rescue League speaks to, you know, the issues surrounding companion animals, this is just a short paragraph, "The Animal Rescue League believes that many unwanted behaviors, including roaming and aggression, can and should be adequately addressed by spay, neutering, reducing the time an animal is kept tethered, confined, or left without adequate social interaction, and humane training." So, kinda hits all those key areas.
Could I add an addendum to the suggestions that my colleague has provided, I would like an insurance binder on that as well?
I mentioned insurance.
I have that. You have that already, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay.
That's okay.
And the other, and the other, the other matter is, and I know that Mr. Lynch, I mean, yeah, Mr. Lynch has already said that he would, but I would just like it on the record with respect to the, the payment of all medical bills.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good point, okay.
And, and one other quick question for Mr. Lynch, the, the area that's separated from your house to the, to the fenced-in area in your backyard, what is the total distance roughly between your house and, and the backyard that your dog has to walk to?
Probably twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay, would it, would it be something out of the-
It's, it's a window or driveway.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Uh, two-car, uh, two-car-wide driveway.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a back, is there a back entry to, to your, to your apartment?
No, if I go through the garage, there's a door that leads into the back as well, so in that case, it would be four feet from my porch to the door, and then we're in the garage, and there's a door through the garage.
Okay, I was just thinking, maybe if you could put a channeled walkway with chain link, so that way, when they come out, they could go right, right into the backyard, type of deal.
Wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do that.
Not, not, not something that's-
We got a, yeah, we got a two-car garage, I mean, there's cars parked in there.
Oh, that's right, they're rental, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah, never mind.
So, Michael, I know you, you have, you're capturing all of this, can you just go through the list before we take a vote?
Sure, so I have, the dog should be humanely restrained, anytime leaving the house, the dogs must be on a leash, dogs must be muzzled in public, requiring further training of the dog and proof that that training has been obtained within sixty days, apply the one-person-per-dog rule in this case, obtain and provide proof of insurance, that the animal control officer will do an inspection of the fence and provide a report regarding its condition, requirement of microchipping of the, of the dog, and the payment of the Brogans' veterinary bills.
And are we requiring Jazzy to be spayed?
I thought we did.
We did.
I thought, yeah.
So I missed that one, okay.
Yep.
Jazzy needs to be spayed, what about Pebbles?
Already.
I heard Pebbles was spayed, or neutered, or-
Pebbles is spayed.
Spayed, okay.
And chipped.
Yes, do, can you come up to the, yeah, we've closed the public hearing, so this is kind of-
I just wanna, they've had a problem before with the young lady leading the dog, they had a problem serious, I would change that one person to one adult person, I don't know.
Well, I think he mentioned that his daughter is nineteen now, so she qualifies as an adult.
My daughter, my daughter doesn't care anymore.
I understand, Mr. Lynch, that your daughter doesn't live there, she lives with a boy, finished, she got a job, but I'm saying, for the rule of this, to be sure that there's no problem to have an adult. But I'm saying, for the rule of this, to be sure that there's no problem to have an adult, that's just an suggestion to the board.
That makes sense, an adult, because certainly, you know, if it's one person per dog, but if it's, yeah, an adult per dog.
An adult.
So, sounds like we have a motion there?
A nineteen year old is an adult.
Yes.
We got that, we got it.
So, um, is the board comfortable with those order of conditions?
Yes.
May I ask that, um, before you vote, do you have a time, like, uh, when all this should be done? Like, is it ninety days, is it cer-? The training, I think somebody said, within thirty days, have a contract, but-
Sixty days for the training. Sixty days for the training, I would say for everything else, you know, the, probably same thing, sixty days.
Well, I would say the insurance binder should be acquired tomorrow, in my opinion. So maybe thirty days for the insurance, and then, uh, you know, sixty for the training. Uh, I, I would think you could secure microchipping and spaying at a, at a vet within sixty days as well.
Why micro, why microchipping? I, I don't understand that logic. The microchip is only to locate the dog if it was dead. I mean, in theory, I mean, what, why microchipping?
Because if the dog should get loose, I think it's, uh, uh, you know, it, it's a means of identification. I, I think the law allows it, and I think it's something we should include.
So the dog gets loose, and it bites a dog and takes off, what is the microchip gonna do? I, that's all I'm gonna say on that, but that's it, I'm gonna sign off now.
There's gonna be bigger issues.
My lawyer can talk about that.
How does the board feel? You want to keep the microchipping in?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I think everything within sixty days.
Except the insurance, so thirty days.
Thirty days, yes.
There's also a financial impact here, right?
Right.
In regards to the training, and the chipping, and the spaying, and the insure, you know, so.
Yeah, and the reimbursement.
And the reimbursement for the vet, so.
So, just to clarify, are you expecting more vet visits related to this?
Yeah, I'm expecting a Friday, so.
So I would move that we accept the, or condition of this, uh, action based on the list as presented by the town manager.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that carries five zero, so we haven't, we have, um, conditions that, Mr. Lynch, you, you will receive, I'm sure you'll receive this in written format, but, um, you know, I can't stress to you enough that we do not want to have another incident with this, with either one of your dogs come before us.
No, do I?
All, all of us, all of us here are, um, at least, I, I can say several of us are dog owners, and we are responsible dog owners, and we expect that members of our community will also be responsible dog owners. So, I think that you have one more chance with these dogs, so.
Just for the, for the record, you know, it seems like you all think I'm an unresponsible dog owner. I go to the Natick Dog Park with both dogs. I go to the Medfield Hospital with both dogs. I have videos of interactions with other dogs off-leash, and it's never an issue. And again, I am so sad that this happened, and I feel for, you know, I, I'm very sorry. I, you know, I, I, I didn't expect it, and here's where we are, so.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you, we appreciate that, and like I said, we hope we don't have to revisit this situation again.
I do too, I do too.
Okay.
And, and the training thing, that's a social event. I, I, I'm, I'm all for it, I'll, you know, it's all good.
Okay.
It is, it's good, so thank you.
Alright.
Good luck.
Thank you, we are-
Board, uh, thank you, and I'm so sorry, I was here in April.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we remember you, Mr. Cohen.
I'll remember you very well, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
The wolf dog.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you to, to our animal control officer, Donna Walsh, and thank you to Mr. Brogan for being here. And we're, and, and we're so sorry that you've been through this. So, it's heartbreaking. So, um, so I'm, I'm, does anybody need a break, or are we okay moving on?
I am gonna take a quick break.
Can we take, can we take a five minute break?
Sure, sounds good.
Paul, can you put us on, on standby for a few minutes? Okay, after that, I think we all kind of need a break. Alright, we'll see you in five, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. We just took a quick break after our dangerous dog hearing and we are getting back on the agenda to old new business. And the next item on the agenda is to vote on new trash fee rates. Michael, you want me to turn it over to you and then we can talk through. Also, just as part of this, let's talk a little bit about our current trash situation with service and just where we are and...
Yeah, why don't I start off with that?
Okay.
So, you know, as you all know, we've had issues this fiscal year with waste management and their performance and pickups, et cetera. So, the last time that we had, we had a meeting was a couple of weeks after that I had instituted about forty thousand dollars in fines to waste management. They had been performing well for that couple of week period between when the fines were issued and when we met. I'm happy to say that they've continued that good performance over the last couple of weeks. So, we really only have a three to four week history of good performance. Obviously, that's not a big sample size. But it seems to be trending in the right direction. So, so there's, there is that. So, getting to the trash fees, again, just to kind of recap for yourselves and the people at home. We have, over the last few years, been utilizing retained earnings to subsidize the rates. And so, we're at the last year of being able to do that. And so, we're looking at fiscal year 2024 and trash costs. And given the budget scenarios that we have, it looks like we are going to face a five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar deficit. So, we have to look at the rates in order to make up that deficit. And again, this is mainly for the people watching. We do have two sources of revenue that we depend on mainly. One is revenue from bag fees and then also a base fee. So, the last time we had met, Brittany and I had made a recommendation utilizing a trash fee, base fee of around two hundred and fifty dollars, which was a hun- over a hundred dollar increase over what they currently are. The board had expressed an interest in putting most of the cost on the bag fees, the bag costs. And so, what, what I've done is I have, I haven't flipped them from a percentage standpoint, but I have, my recommendation is to increase the bag or the full base rate by fifty percent and the senior rate by fifty percent, which would translate to a two hundred and nineteen dollar base fee and a hundred and seventeen dollar base fee for seniors. And then also a forty percent increase in bag fees, which in total would, the bag fees would raise two hundred and six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, the reason I'm still putting a lot on the base rate, or at least half on the base rate, is back fees are a variable revenue source and so they're not steady. So, think about it from a, but like our general fund budget perspective. The majority of our budget is funded through taxes, property taxes, which is, at least the base amount is stable. We do have some variable sources of income. Mainly those go to local receipts, but that's about four point five million dollars compared to our, our budget. So, you know, if, if you do have a change in the variable rate, it's not going to present as big a problem as if you built a budget largely on variable rates that, that could fluctuate. So, one of the things that I am, you know, concerned about is that if we do put a, too much on the bag fees, that it could potentially push people to put regular trash into the recycling bins so they don't have to pay the back fees. And that has a three-way impact to us. First of all, it increases the disposal cost for recycling. It does reduce the back fee revenue. And then also, it increases the possibility of incurring a contamination fee for our recycling stream. So, that is, I, that is my professional recommendation. And I'm interested to hear what you say about that.
Steve, go ahead.
So, I haven't really deviated from our last meeting. Michael and I talked about this earlier. I, I still feel at this point, and to me, this is kind of year one of what's going to be adjustments on a very regular basis. So, and I get, you know, Michael's point about the variability of, of the bags and the usage of the bags, but I still feel that I would prefer to see a modest, a more modest increase in the, in the base fee and a larger dependence on the bag at this point. And, and kind of the percentages I used had a little bit of a buffer so that if there is variation in the, in the bag sales, you know, that might be covered in that regard. I personally, looking at the projections provided, I think we're going to wind up increasing the base fees for the next couple of years anyway. So, that's, that's kind of my logic for, for keeping it. And, and I had gone up thirty percent on the base fee. And, and I actually am advocating for a seventy percent increase on the back fee. And that covers the, covers the deficit, but also has a little bit of buffer. So, that's my logic.
What do you think about Michael's concern that you'll have avoidance of using the bags because of the price?
Well, it seems, I don't know, it's, you know, a small bag at a dollar seventy-nine, a large bag at three dollars. I mean, you know, is it, is that an outrageous price for, for trash bags? I personally don't think so. I mean, and, but again, it's all, it's all variable depending on your, your usage, right?
Let me ask a question, because I don't buy the trash bags in my family, so I'm going to ask this question. So, how many trash bags are in a roll of large bags? Like...
Six or eight, ten?
Five or nine.
Okay. Cause, cause, you know, three dollars a bag times however many bags in a package.
Twenty bucks for a package, let's say.
Okay. So, I'm just...
Sure.
It is a little bit of a, something people would notice.
Yeah, okay.
And Chair, if you don't mind, Michael, when was the last time we went up on our rates? Cause I don't believe you made that comment. How many years has it been since we went up on our rates?
We have not gone up on rates since I have been here, so almost ten years. In fact, the only rate change we made was we actually adjusted them down. So, it was one fifty-four. We, I'm just going with the full base rate. It was one fifty-four. We went down to one forty-six.
Okay. So, nearly ten years we've gone without, without, without raising the fees.
Correct.
Not, it's not a good time. Maybe, you know, everything's going up, this, that, and everything else, but you have to take that into consideration. I hope the residents would understand that, you know, we haven't gone up in ten years. You know, everybody buys coffee. When was the last time coffee went up? It goes up all the time, but I don't hear anybody complain. So...
Well, none of us want to raise trash fees, you know, nobody wants to.
You know, especially those that are on fixed incomes.
The issue is that we're going to be raising them, I think, on a regular basis now, the way, the way it looks.
Well, and that's, you know, ideally, that's the way it really should work.
So, we can keep our open mind. What if, what if we just, like, I, I think Michael's making a responsible recommendation. What if we just tweak it a little bit and maybe go to... You're at fifty percent. Maybe we go to, oh, that reminded, what did the Sustainability Committee end up saying? Did they come up with a specific recommendation?
Yeah, we did have Ash at our last meeting and they, so just with regards to the fees, that they felt more should be put on the back fees.
But they, were they specific, did they have access to this and have a specific...
No, they didn't have like a specific percentage recommendation.
So, I don't, maybe we go to sixty percent bags.
Sixty, forty.
So, I did some calculations just to get to the, get to the number, to the, to the five seventy-five number. And mine is a little bit different than Michael's. I went up by forty percent on the fixed cost for both...
A little lower.
For the flat rate and for seniors, which is about two hundred and eighty-three thousand of revenue. And then up by fifty percent on the bag fee. So, a little bit more on the bag fee than, than the, than the fixed cost. But it gets us to the, to the five seventy-five number. So, it's, it's just tweaking.
More than Mike, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Brenda, using your figures, the elderly trash fee would have to be what now? I don't know, it's seventy-eight.
So, it would go up, so it would go up forty percent too. So, it would go up, the new senior rate would be a hundred and nine twenty.
And the regular rate would be two oh four forty rather than two nineteen, which is what Michael was advocating for.
All right. I, I second Brandy. Is that a motion?
Yeah, well, it's up for discussion, so...
One of the things I had asked last meeting, and I apologize that I didn't get to ask this for, again, is it, you know, we have the sheet that shows the bags and the percentages and what they generate. And then we have the separate sheets that show what each of the bag, the, the base fee increase. Is there any way to put that on one spreadsheet to say, or some, some way to do the math that says, you know, you know, so Brandy's suggestion is we do this. Can we get an active spreadsheet that says if we do this, this is what we generate? And if we do something else, this is what we generate? Cause...
But we have to, we have to make a decision tonight. So, we're really making...
Do we just use our calculator?
Well, so here's the question, because I just really did the quick math and it doesn't even, and, and again, I could have done it wrong. Based on what you're recommending, Michael, the amount for the senior base and for our base and the bags, unless I miscalculated, it doesn't look like it covers the five seventy-three. Did I do something, did I miss something?
You have to have four different amounts, right?
So, I have, so the forty percent increase in back fees generates...
Oh, okay, that's what I did wrong.
Two hundred and six thousand.
Two oh six. Okay, that was my, that's what I had wrong.
And also, Britney, Brittany is, is here as well.
She's muted, though.
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, Brittany had any thoughts or comments. I should have offered that up.
If there's anything that you want to add, you can feel free to unmute yourself.
It seems like Brandy's proposal kind of splits the difference, you know?
Brittany's not taking...
Brittany wants, wants nothing to do with us tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm just listening.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just joking with you, Brittany. First of all, thank you for putting all this together. Like, having, having these documents is really helpful cause I think it gets us to, to, to real actual, like, you know, kind of figuring out the moving parts of this that makes sense to, to hit our, our deficit. So, so thank you for, for doing that. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, there's, there's not.
Okay. Okay. Joe or, or Rob, do you have anything else that you want to...
I would just support your thinking on that if you want to put a motion.
So, can you repeat that and where does it get, where does that get us in regards to our needs?
Okay, so I would, so for the, for FY twenty-four, I would say we increase the fixed full rate amount by, it says a hundred and forty percent, but it's, so it's forty percent more than what it is today, which would add two hundred and eighty-three thousand of revenue. And the same amount, the forty percent increase for seniors, which would add thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents in, in fixed revenue. And then change the bag fee amount by fifty percent, which would generate two hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents more in revenue.
Fifty percent or forty, or sixty percent?
Fifty percent.
Okay.
Fifty percent in bags, forty percent in flat fees.
Got it.
So, just for folks watching that might be interested in how this all pans out, we had kind of mentioned it, but the flat rate amount would go up to two hundred and four dollars and forty cents. And then for seniors, the amount would go up to a hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents.
And that, just to clarify, also, that's a yearly fee.
That is, that is for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts July first, for one year. And then I would say, to Steve's point, we're going to need to revisit this on a yearly basis, so...
And the bags, just to also clarify, the bags would be now two dollars and seventy cents, whether a dollar eighty right now currently. And that's for the large bag. And the small bag would be a dollar fifty-eight, an increase from a dollar five.
Correct.
When would we implement that?
So, this would go in to the next billing cycle, which I believe is August. Is that correct, Brittany?
Yes, that's correct.
And when would the bag price actually change?
So, we would probably start that July first.
So, stock up?
So, we'll see a huge revenue.
Which could happen, right? People could go and get them less expensively and then...
Sure.
So, does that get us, does, does what Brandy recommend, forty percent on the flat fees and fifty percent on the bags?
It, it does.
Does that get us there?
It gets us where we need, where we need to be.
All right. So, did Brandy make a motion?
I think she did.
It was a long motion, but...
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
So, basically to raise, raise the flat fee by forty percent and the bag fee by fifty percent for FY twenty-four.
I'll second.
So, if you divide that by ten, for ten years, that we haven't raised anything, that's pretty cheap. If you think that way, the people, well, sometimes they need to be reminded of that. I really think they need to be reminded that we haven't gone up in ten years.
I think it's important to, to note that we haven't raised fees.
You know, public safety building hitting the tax rate, the new school hitting the tax rate, that's one of the reasons why we opted not to go up on that.
We're sensitive to, we're sensitive to the fees.
People need to be reminded that we were sensitive to all those things. So, but we hit the wall now, so we have no choice.
So, that is my motion. Is there a second?
I did second, I had seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, that passes five zero. We have trash fees.
Right, thank you. And I, I will say, I mean, one of the things that, you know, we've spoken about, or some of us have spoken about offline, is, you know, there are towns that do not provide trash service and give homeowners the flexibility to contract with their own hauler to provide, provide service. And that is generally much more expensive.
Pretty inefficient, I would think.
Yeah, so I think out in Lester, it's forty-eight dollars a month, you know, almost six hundred bucks a year for...
We were talking to the town planner earlier and I think he lives in Needham, and I think it was six or seven hundred dollars for his yearly fee.
For his, for private service.
And the other thing, I mean, we still, we did talk about going every two weeks and trying to figure out if that might be workable.
Yeah, the last time we talked about it, though, I mean, one of the, the issues is, you know, waste management. Well, let's just say it's waste management. Any hauler, can they staff...
They would need to respond to those concerns and see if it's doable.
But I definitely, you know, I definitely understand the position that you're in and appreciate that and thank you for, for the vote.
And, you know, hopefully, the, the service with waste management continues to be on the upswing and, but I know that, that you and Doug are on this and on top of waste management too and holding them accountable with fines and, you know... If we don't, if, if they don't perform to the level of service, there's, we would take action on them. All right. All right, moving on to, to our agenda, discuss and vote on moving hall house allocation into the Warren District Reserve Fund. So, a couple of meetings ago, we had mentioned that there was money that, I think it was from the sale of the hall house and money that we put aside for the hall house, or maybe I'm misremembering it. So, Michael, do you...
Yeah, so we had discussed two buckets of money relative to the hall house. So, the first bucket of money is the larger bucket, which is a hundred and seventy-one thousand that we had set aside from the money in the Warren District Fund in order to help renovate the house. So, as you know, we're not responsible for renovating the house. That has been delegated to a private party, so that money is freed up. And, and we have the ability to transfer that money to another account in the Warren District and the recommendation is going to the reserve account. There's also that second buck, bucket of money related to the hall house, which is much smaller. And that is the ten thousand dollars that was paid as part of the, the purchase price for the property. So, that cannot be transferred. That goes into the general fund per Mass General law. So, I'm asking for a transfer, a vote to transfer the hundred and seventy-one to...
Before we do that, can you just remind us the Warren District Reserve Fund, that is under the care and custody of the Select Board still?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and in general, what can or could that be used for?
So, it's, it's generally, so we also have a perpetual care account that, that helps fund ongoing expenses. So, the reserve fund is, is there in case there's any issues with that or if there's a large purchase that needs to be made. So, for example, you know, Carl had wanted to purchase a tractor for the maintenance of Warren Woods. He proposed that to the board, that it would come out of the reserve fund. The board took a vote to, to authorize that purchase, so...
Could this also be used once we decide to move forward with the barn? If there's things inside the barn we want to furnish it with, or is, is that the kind of thing it could be used for as well?
Well, it could be with a vote. I, you know, I do feel like, you know, we have the opportunity to use, you know, other funds to help, to help do that. So, just to remind everybody, we do have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Senate President Spolka and state ARPA funds to help fund the reconstruction of the barn. I think our last estimate was closer to a million, so we would need to find a way to bridge that gap. But hopefully CPC would be an option. Some of our own ARPA funds, money that might come to us in the future could be utilized for that as well.
Okay. I move that we move a hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents from the Warren Woods Hall House account to the Warren District Reserve Fund.
And is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Moving on to an FY twenty-four budget update. Michael, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, so just, since we last met, Brittany, Jen and I have met with department heads who've put together their budget submissions. So, we did an initial round of discussions with them, kind of went over their materials. If there's anything outstanding, any questions that we had, we asked them to go back and, you know, make changes or provide whatever information was missing. Brittany is now in the process of meeting with them specifically about some of the numbers and kind of seeing where there, you know, might be some opportunities for changes there. We are going to plan on holding a budget workshop. Initially, we were thinking about February tenth. After talking with Brittany, it's more realistic to hold that on February seventeenth. This will be a meeting with us and the department heads and the Select Board and FINCOM is, is invited to participate as well. At that point, we'll give you a, a general budget overview of where things are and we'll discuss specific departmental budgets as well.
That's a Friday morning?
Friday morning, nine thirty.
That's Friday. Any reason why, you know, the, the governor's budget isn't due until March first? And so, is that obscure, important information to have?
It's important information, but at the MMA conference, the governor did say that they would try to provide the local aid numbers before the full budgets released.
Okay.
And they did come up with a consensus revenue estimate of forty point one billion. And I believe they were using one billion from the millionaire's tax. That's what they were estimating. So...
I don't have to worry about that tax.
Yeah.
A lot of people, a lot of people don't, so...
Part of the budget update, we're looking to schedule a tri-board meeting as well? Where is that at?
So, we, I had reached out to Lori Tostu, the chair of the school committee, for a date, the week of the sixth. She came back with the ninth, which it seems like it works for our board, but doesn't work for FINCOM. So, like, three members of FINCOM. So, I went back to Lori to see if maybe Wednesday, the eighth, might work. I haven't heard back from her yet. So, do you guys have availability on the eighth as well if...
We're talking March now, right?
Yeah, March, sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I can take March ninth off my calendar?
I wouldn't take anything off yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just say, because, because ideally, we want all of FINCOM to be there, but...
Well, the majority, for sure.
So, but I think it's probably worth the discussion, like, you know, if, if we can't make, if we can't make the, the eighth work, then the ninth, we'll keep on the calendar and we'll...
And it'll be here in this room or it'll be downstairs in B and C?
We'll do it here.
Here, okay.
And the budget workshop is here?
Mm-hmm.
And time?
Um, nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Won't be here, sorry.
Yeah, those of us who are working are not going to make that.
They'll be away.
I'll, I'll give you a report, Rob.
So, I'll, hopefully, I'll hear back from Lori this week and we'll get that, we'll get that locked and loaded. So... Is there anything else on the budget?
No, so if, so for our tri-board meeting, we'll have three weeks between the seventeenth, roughly three weeks between the seventeenth and that date. The school department, the school committee, I believe, is going to go through their first round of the budget, of their budget, I should say, on March fourth. So, they should have a little bit more fidelity into their numbers by the time we meet as well.
What do we have in the reserve account?
So, which was, we've got a number of reserve accounts. Are you talking about the stabilization fund?
Stabilization, yeah. On the rainy day account, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it's, it's almost eight million. Brittany, since, if you're still here, can you, you look that up?
Yeah, I can look it up.
I believe it's, it's close to, it's ten percent of what our budget is. So, it might be closer to seven. But it's at ten percent of our budget of revenues. You know, obviously, we're going to try to avoid utilizing that as much as we can.
No, I know. That's, I was just curious.
We're at seven point five million.
Seven point five.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it's still ten percent.
Thanks, Brittany.
Does anybody else have any questions on budget?
Nope. Good.
MMA update. I wanted to list out the stuff so we could actually have a discussion on it. Cannabis is first on the, listed first. Do you want to, do you want to give a, give a quick update as to...
Yeah, just, just real quick. So, this agenda item relates to workshops that, that attendees at the Mass Municipal Association have opportunities to, to join in on. And there are a variety of topics for, of interest to anybody in local government. So, I chose, one of the ones I, I chose this year was cannabis, cannabis workshop. It was held sponsored by the Cannabis Control Commission. Of course, they have a, they have a sense of humor. The name of the workshop was Neighborhood Join... The name of the workshop was Neighborhood Joins, the CCC in your municipality. But they gave a, you know, it was just, just quickly, an overview of where they started from, where they are today, the different types of licenses that are available, and some of the new things that are coming down. And, you know, I don't want to get too much in the weeds here. I do have some additional comments I'm going to make when, when I, when I, during board reports, I'll have some, some more personal reflections on.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, if you're going to follow.
No, I was just going to say, interestingly enough, I mean, if we need some help, one of our five prior assistant planners actually works for the Cannabis Control Commission.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You're from five? What's your question?
Amanda.
Well, are you, because, so we had, it was a big deal a few years ago, when we were going back and forth about whether to have a dispensary. Are you maybe thinking we should relook at that, or what's the?
Well, I, I'm going to, you know, that was my intent during border part, is just to, you know, open that up for discussion. And it's really not something, you know, I'm not suggesting...
Well, I would say, if you're, if you want something for discussion, I would say, do it now.
Right. While we're, while we're talking about cannabis on the...
So, you know, it's, it's, here we are, it's four years later since adult use has been legalized, and, you know, from my perspective, it doesn't seem like the sky is falling in. And what, what we do know is that the gross sales for adult-use cannabis is four billion dollars from, from two thousand and eighteen, when it was, when it was approved and the first store opened, to today. And that's generated something like just shy of a billion dollars' worth of, worth of revenue to the state. So, you know, to me, it's, you know, listening to this presentation, there's, there's lots of different potentials or opportunities to participate in this revenue stream. And for me, it's, it's about the economic opportunities and the revenue. It's not about legality, it's legal. There's no discussion. You know, I don't want to minimize the concerns that all of us should have about, you know, access to kids and, you know, the parental concerns, because that's, that's big. But there's lots of potential opportunities to get into the cannabis industry without having a retail store. They've got couriers, there's cultivation, you know, different delivery services, there's testing facilities, manufacturing, and, and the latest thing that they're, they're now working on, and, and should be opening up very soon, is, is actual social consumption, like, like a bar, similar to, you know, going into, to a bar, but I'm not sure how the layouts will be. You know, my point is, it doesn't necessarily have to be a retail store. So, I guess at the end of the day, for me, you know, by having a ban, we've essentially eliminated any potential of, of participating in this potential revenue. And, you know, when you look at, you want to talk about addiction, let's look at the state and how addicted they are in terms of the revenues that are generated by alcohol and tobacco and gambling. We started sports gambling yesterday. You know, tobacco, so, you know, there's an addiction. But, you know, I, I think, you know, from a, again, I don't want to minimize the concerns that all of us have as parents, as grandparents, for some of us. You know, I, I think that, you know, that's a big, in today's environment, that it's just a huge challenge. And, you know, when you throw in social media and cell phones and so on into this mix of potential substances, it's, being a parent today is pretty damn tough. I think you could speak to that much better. But, you know, as far as this discussion goes, you know, I don't expect the board to embrace this, and I wouldn't ask the board to sponsor or embrace anything like this. To me, this is built for a citizen's petition. And I don't know if there's, you know, a critical mass out there that might be, you know, willing to consider reversing the adult-use ban. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't. The maturity, the, the industry is maturing, you know, prices are kind of, and I know all this stuff only because I went to a workshop. It's not, you know, the fact that I, you know, go to cannabis shops. It's just from this workshop. And, but I think, you know, the, the industry is maturing, prices are adjusting, so, but I think there's, there's potential opportunities there. And, and again, I think it's, it's probably ripe for a citizen's petition, citizen's petition approach for this, and so we'll see if there's enough critical mass out there. But essentially, that's my, my report.
Look at cultivation, put in the CR.
Except that you're not allowed to do it in open air.
Good point.
That's right.
All cultivation has to be indoor, indoors.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, you know, it's such a highly regulated industry. I mean, it truly is beyond belief, and everything's barcoded. And, you know, access by underage, I mean, you just don't have access through a, through a dispensary, no different than, you know, a liquor store. And it's not to say that we don't have challenges with, with our kids, you know, partaking in, in substances. But, you know, that's a parental thing. That's a parental responsibility. So, so that's my quick, you know, analysis there.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments, questions? No?
Something to think about.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Steve. So, I put a couple things on here for MMA, too. Steve and I actually went to a housing workshop, which wasn't as optimistic about housing as I would have liked, although the governor and the Lieutenant Governor especially did, spoke a lot about creation of housing and creation of affordable housing. And one of the things the Lieutenant Governor had talked about was recognizing that there's not a lot of, sort of, that middle affordable housing being created and the issues around that. The housing workshop that we went to, the only thing that was really interesting to me was, you know, they were talking about how hard it is to, to get through an inclusionary bylaw. One of the towns had failed in their first attempt to get through inclusionary zoning. They also talked about ADUs, which is something else that's kind of on our radar, that we kind of want to look at.
Accessory dwelling units for folks out there.
Which is, which is basically like an in-law apartment on someone's house. Because I think now Ashland's bylaw only allows immediate family members, I think it is, to, to...
Yeah, I thought we were going to change.
Yeah, I believe so, with a special permit.
Yeah, so, so ADUs are a way for us, for towns to create affordable housing that they, people could, like, rent, and so it would be kind of a, more of a naturally affordable.
Why don't we put that on the Springtown meeting? Why don't we put it on the warrant? Is it that complicated?
Yes.
I think it's a zoning change, so it would need to go through the zoning.
Yeah, I could tell you, the planning department is nowhere.
Well, and I would say, at this point, why would we want to throw anything out there until we've gone through our comprehensive plan process?
Right, I think it could be definitely.
And our strategic plan process, right?
Yeah, I said we had agreed a couple years ago that this should be a priority.
So, so I have on my list to reach out to a woman from Mass. Housing Partnership that was talking a little bit about some of the, because I, I wanted to ask the question, we ran out of time, about, asking about developers that they work with that do, that do affordable housing, because I think that's one of the challenges, is really getting somebody to want to do these projects. Yolanda and I had talked to Claire O'Neill from Mass. Development, who had done work on our downtown and was very familiar with Ashland.
Corner spa.
Yeah, corner spa.
Affordable housing, you're looking for a developer, right?
Yeah, and it's very difficult.
Yeah.
It's very difficult. You have to subsidize the contractors, because they're losing money. They're not making money.
Well, it was recommended that we put Mass. Development in our affordable housing in, in communication, because they are providing help.
The loan.
Mass. Development is some technical support.
And low-interest loans.
I think I have her card on my desk, or if you have, yeah, so.
Yeah, so it might be.
Yeah.
I think, I think she might be a really good resource for us, too, so. So, that was really kind of, you know, I mean, there's no...
Just, just to add about housing, the other thing that I think was interesting was that they are continuing to push the, the policies and things that were put in place by the previous administration. So, it's not like they're trying to change it completely, or they're taking, they're taking the foundation of what was done with the previous administration in regards to the housing and things like that, and they're just continuing that, which was good to see.
That's a good point, too, because, you know, the housing creation is a statewide problem. I think they said something like, we're two hundred thousand units of housing still short. So, you know, we talk about, like, the MBTA communities, we talk about a lot of the other states.
Considering, I don't know, I think it was last year sometime, I had given some numbers based on something that I had gone to, that in, you know, in one, in a certain period, we had created almost a hundred, a million units of housing, and then, and then in the past twenty years, we created half of that.
Right.
So, housing is an issue, and we know it's an issue. And then it's the determination of where is the best place to put it, because as we're hearing here in our community, people don't want large housing units. They don't want apartment complexes, they don't want. So, how do you try to create housing that is affordable, that people will want, and work within your community?
It's a challenge everywhere. I mean, I think that was evident with that, that workshop, and, you know, they were, they were really discussing more their failures.
Right.
Of being able to implement these projects, rather than success stories.
Yeah.
So, the other thing I wanted to just mention, too, is, so the, the MSA, the Select Boards Association, had their annual meeting, and one of the, the discussion that they had, it was actually really interesting. It was on, it was a flag-flying policy. So, the city of Boston actually had a case that went all the way to the Supreme Court, where, you know, they would fly flags out in front of City Hall Plaza. They would fly them for, you know, on request from people, they would fly them on, you know, if the Bruins were playing, they'd fly the Bruins, you know, so. And it was sort of a form of what the city thought was government speech, until there was a request to fly a religious flag that they had denied, and it became an issue between the First Amendment and, and government speech that went all the way to the Supreme Court. So, the city of Boston had argued and lost. So, basically, what came out of that was that cities and towns should really look to create a flag-flying policy of what is allowed, not only for the flags, but also for things like banners on light posts and things like that, just to have some, some guidelines, and it could be, it could be a select board policy or like a town-wide bylaw, but just to have some codified language that says what is allowed and what our policy is. We had worked with Ashland United, they came in front of us, like, earlier this year, I think it was, about flying, you know, kind of like handling all the requests that come in from, from other people that wanted to do, like, flying from...
There was the, there was a program at the, at the, at Stone Park, some, some flag-flying program that we supported, that I thought we approved, and I thought we had language for, like, banners on our light poles when we did our light pole banner thing.
We did banners, and we still have. I don't know if we have an actual select board policy regarding banners. I think it was Beth that really kind of, you know, we initiated something, and then Beth kind of took over the implementation of it. But that's a good point, because now we've got brand-new poles with the, with the ability to put banners on. So, when do we start to implement that?
So, I was just going to say, so it might be worth, like, us discussing, coming up with some policy, or, you know, for, for both of those, if that was something that you guys were interested in. It just, it just was like, wow, I guess, you know, yeah, we could get sued if we decided that we didn't want to fly, you know, a certain, a certain flag, based on other things that we, we do and support, so. So, just, just food for thought. We don't have to, obviously, you know.
I'm going to look, I know we created, when I say, it certainly wasn't a policy, but we had, like, a banner program is what we created.
Okay.
And again, Beth implemented this. So, I'm sure I have it at home, I can send it to you, take a look at it.
Okay. It would be something we'd probably want to work with Town Council on, to get some language, and, yeah.
You know, speaking of flags, I mean, it's, it's, it's related, it's not related, but, you know, I was talking to Jen earlier tonight about programming in libraries, and we're starting to read about, you know, different situations where events are sponsored, are occurring in libraries, book readings and so on, not sponsored by the libraries, and some of them may be, you know, they're not your everyday type of story hour. There, there's been a couple of situations, I think, more in southeast, southeastern Mass with the drag queen story hours. Have you seen that in the news at all?
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, and now, I think Jen was telling me about some religious-oriented story hours that were being conducted in the li, public library, but not sponsored. So, you know, it's, we're, obviously, this is freedom of speech issues that were, you know, but it's interesting.
So, but anyway, I thought, I thought you guys might be interested in hearing about that, so. So, that is all on that. Unless anyone has any other questions or comments?
No, but I would just want to add that one of the sessions that I went to, and it's not listed on here, because I didn't realize you wanted them listed, and Michael went to this one as well, was on communication, and how to use your website better, and using your local papers, and leveraging your website. I think our website's getting better, but I still think there's some improvements. It also talked about growing the trust within your community about, with your communication, and I think it's getting there. I think we have a couple of things we could do to engage the public. And again, this will tie into when we do the comprehensive plan, strategic plan. But I think, Michael, I want to say, I think your last newsletter had some updates that I think were very helpful. And I think that if the public read it, it was very beneficial, specifically about the Public Safety Building and what's going on with the doors. You shared what you could, and, and I think that was very helpful. So, I think those kinds of things, if we could increase and make sure that as those kinds of emails and newsletters are going out, it really gives specific information, so.
Yeah, with regards to that, one of my major takeaways is the, you know, Needham PIO, who makes a hundred K, they have their newsletter, which she, I mean, her presentation was on their newsletter, and Needham, which has a significantly larger population than us, has a distribution of their newsletter of about five thousand.
Right.
You know, our communications coordinator position, which pays considerably less in a town of eighteen thousand, has the same distribution amount, so.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yolanda, just a question, did, did that work? Because we constantly go back and forth about public Facebook posting, specifically the Happy Board, for example, that, was there any discussion about guidelines for using non-unithical resources at all?
They didn't go into that. Basically, they said that that is not the best way to communicate things out. If you're, if, to communicate out, you want to be using your website, you want to leverage your website, you want to be using emails, you want to be using your local media, you want to find ways, because on social media, it is just not the best way to communicate things out.
Although we have effectively used it, I think. I mean, a number of us have, at least informally.
I think it depends, it probably depends on, my observation, my experience, it depends on, on the subject matter and so on. I mean, I, you know, I don't, it's not, like, I post every day, but I, you know, quite frequently will post some, some subject. And some of them, I, you know, get a tremendous amount of feedback, some, nothing. So, it really depends on that.
Randy, you post periodically, I mean, we'll kind of use it as we see fit.
I think the one thing we have to be careful about is, and I've said this before, is if there's something that gets posted, we want to make sure, if it's coming from any of us, that it's, and, you know, we're making it sound official, it's either, one, you know, this is just me saying this, or that it stays to facts and not opinion. Because to Steve's point, I think all of us are on the Happy Board, and if one of us puts opinion out, and it's something we're going to be discussing, we could be impacted if other, if we start posting on it.
Yeah, we can deliberate.
Well, I will say, most of my things are opinion pieces, but they're not related to agenda items.
Right.
You know, so that's, I think, the key differential. So, you can give your opinion, just maybe not necessarily on something you're going to adjudicate, you know, at the next meeting.
Interesting.
Thank you, guys, lots of opinions. All right, so moving on in our agenda, discuss the Upper Trail, Upper Charles Trail connection issue. Rob, do you want to kind of give a quick little?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I thought it would be good to put this on the agenda for discussion, both to get information and updates. And, and what happened, this particular case, and I think Joel's on there, right? Joel Arby, I mean, the Chair of the, um, Upper Charles Trail Committee, brought to my attention, and also the rest of the trail members, that if you'll recall, the particular issue here is the connection of our trail from Sherburne, um, going, you know, under Maple Street and along the CSX tracks to the end of the Dyke Trail and then into Ashland, if people remember that end of it. So it's been kind of a, a key connection to Sherburne, and then, uh, really on to Holliston. It's really not a huge amount in Sherburne, it's the end of the Holliston Trail. And that's, that's how we complete the Upper Charles loop that goes, you know, from Hawkinson through, um, Milford to, um, Holliston and then to Sherburne. So, um, he brought to my attention that there was, the good news, there's, there's a very active group in Framingham, joining that trail to this very large north, north-south greenway, also, I think, part of the Bruce Freeman Trail, which we were aware of, Yolanda spoke about it, and it was gonna join to the trail as it came out of Sherburne. The, the problem came up is that some of the active discussion on that trail connection, they were leaning, they seemed to be leaning in direction to this ad hoc group, which was very, uh, well organized, included Framingham, Sherburne, and Holliston, and we were kind of late to that game. But now Joel's very involved, fortunately. Uh, they were looking, uh, very closely at going up, I want to, the east side of the CSX rail tracks, because that was, in some sense, a bit easier for them to get up into Framingham that way. And the problem with that, of course, is that would cut Ashland off completely, not only from this new, uh, greenway, big national greenway trail, but would also mean that we didn't, no longer had the connection that we've been working on for like 10 years to the rest of the Upper Charles Trail. So I kind of, um, became very concerned about that, and I asked, uh, Randy and Michael to take that up with Karen Edelman when they met with her as an issue, and, uh, for Joel, of course, to advocate for us with this group, and also to advocate with our elected officials, so we'd all be on the same page, that we weren't really going to allow or, you know, stand still for being cut off from the rest of the trail, which I was really shocked to, you know, surprised to hear that they were, that was under active consideration. So hopefully, um, so I put it on the agenda, both to brief everybody on that and make you aware of it, and just see what the updates are. So I have, I've heard a little bit from Joel, I haven't heard from you guys. I did have a conversation with Representative Lewis, which I'm sure you did as well, which used support of our position to make sure that we, in effect, don't get, that Ashland does not get shut out of this trail connection, both to the rest of the Upper Charles Trail and this, this huge new, uh, this big new, potentially, uh, big trail with commercial implications that we would be shut out of. We want to make sure that we have a strong connection to that trail, which could be an economic development driver. And, um, so that was really the sense in which I wanted this put on the agenda and just alert people to that possibility. So I'm, you know, so I thought it'd be good to have an update, and if we needed to, as a result of this, make our position plain to our elected officials and to the Framingham and Holliston and Sherburne officials, what our, what Ashland's position and concern is here, that, you know, we, we should do that, so. But, um, Joel is prepared to give us an update, but I think he wanted to hear from you guys first, if there was anything, um, from your meeting with, um, Senator Spilka's staff member, when you discussed it with her.
So feel free to jump in, but we, so we, we had a meeting last week with, um, Karen Edelman Foster from, from President Spilka's office, um, and, and, and our representative, Jack Lewis, made them aware of this. This was something that they really hadn't really gotten, um, a full picture of what the implications were. I think the, the next steps were really to, to formalize a meeting, um, which I don't know when that's probably going to take place, but it's, they, they know, they know sort of like the, the timeliness of, of getting, getting this, um, together, and they're, they're planning to advocate for us. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I mean, we made it clear during the meeting that, um, we had appreciated if there was not, if there were not any state support for a connection that cuts Ashland out. And, um, so they seemed receptive to that and understood and supportive of that. Karen had, her idea was to have like an initial meeting between myself and their Community Development Director about this, um, and so that's in the process.
Development Director from?
Framingham, I'm sorry, um, to have an initial discussion, so. And that's in the process of being scheduled.
And, um, you know, the other thing, and, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask a question, and maybe you're going in that direction anyway, but there was, wasn't there a walkthrough last week?
Yes, and I think Joel's gonna be prepared, I think, to tell us about that.
I'd be interested to hear about that.
Preston was there as well, I believe, uh, so. Yeah, and the only other thing I'll, um, the good news in all this is that this committee is very active, and they've actually talked about land acquisition and moved fairly far along that road, apparently. And I think that's the key thing, Michael, they want to bring you into the details on that. So, because it does involve Ashland as well. But I'm not sure if I want to say too much publicly, but, um, anyway, that's, they, they've got resources and they're moving along, so that's good news there. And that could really benefit our end of the trail, uh, assuming we're part of the plan, so.
Does the board have any other questions? So I know Joel, you're, um, we see you on, and I know you've been, you've been, uh, with us since the very beginning tonight, and thank you for joining us. I just wanted to see if you had anything brief to, to add?
Well, I just, a brief statement I'd like to read to the board, I think I can do it in under two minutes, if that's okay?
Okay, sure, go for it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna read as quickly as I can. I have spoken with many past and current select board members, several town managers, town planners, and with many residents here in Ashland about stimulating Ashland's economy. Almost everyone is highly cognizant of the difficulties Ashland faces because unlike towns like Natick, Framingham, Southborough, Hawkinson, and Milford, Ashland does not have an exit off the Mass Pike or Route 495, and we don't have the economic engine that Route 9 provides. But now we have a chance to grab hold of an economic powerhouse called the East Coast Greenway, a trail that already exists and runs for 3,000 miles all the way from Maine to Florida. Long-distance trails of this type are often used by hundreds of thousands of visitors a year and generate millions of dollars in revenue, sometimes tens of millions, to the communities they pass through. As of today, East Coast Greenway maps show the trail going through Sherborne and Holliston and bypassing Ashland. This needs to change. In a document I provided to the Town Manager and to Rob Shearer, the board's liaison to the Upper Charles Trail Committee, I emphasized three critical objectives Ashland will need to meet if we hope to reap major financial returns from the East Coast Greenway. Sorry, I lost my place here. Come on, computer, there we go. First, obviously, we need to have a physical connection to the Dyke Trail, over the Dyke Trail to the CSX tracks in Sherborne. But I should emphasize that this is not enough. Unfortunately, people I've spoken to, this seems to be the main takeaway. We gotta make sure our, our legislative delegation gets us a connection. Well, that's obviously very, very critical, but there are two other really important points. Number two is, we need to ensure what I call route parity, such that trail users are likely to come through Ashland and, as likely to come through Ashland and Hawkinson as they are to travel through Sherborne and Holliston. In other words, the Upper Charles Trail is a planned loop, and we need to get, ideally, we would get half of the traffic coming our way to, you know, help with our local economy. And finally, and this is really important as well, Ashland's trail needs to be formally recognized as a part of the East Coast Greenway by the trail's managing nonprofit organization. Recent progress has given Ashland a major opportunity to jumpstart our entire trail. With just a few key easements, it might be possible to gain route control from Route 126 all the way to Ashland State Park. Discussions about the East Coast Greenway and the acquisition of CSX property are rapidly approaching a critical point, which creates an urgency for Ashland to fully engage on the issue and to act. I'd be happy to provide more details about this to the board when time permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel.
Can I just say, Joel, do you have a quick report on what happened Friday? And what, what does it look like in terms of the near-term issue, as, as Steve was asking?
I've had conversations with Sarki, the Framingham Town Planner, and I have attended now, I believe, two, maybe three, of this committee's meeting. Uh, they are pushing very hard, they have just written to Senator Spilka directly, you know, asking for support in, uh, looking at the possibilities of working with CSX to acquire this, the entire CSX parcel. What they're looking at is, uh, 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 some type of CSX acquisition that would run from the Framingham Train Station on Route 135 all the way down south, down to Whitney Street, where the current Upper Charles Trail ends, uh, in Sherborne. They, the group, uh, with some screaming and whining from me, let's put it delicately, is very, very cognizant that it, it, Ashland has to be a part of this process. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to give us the kind of, uh, marketing signage that we would want, where there's a branch off the CSX tracks to the Dyke Trail. That's very important. I mean, this is not some future thing about thinking about the signage. This is about whether we're, you know, this, this trail is going to be running through Sherborne, not, not initially through Ashland. And we've got to have some way of, of informing trail users that, that Ashland offers two state parks and, uh, you know, other benefits, and the same goes for Hawkinson. They, they too would be cut out of the picture largely. So it's not just having a connection, but ensuring that we have equity here and that, and that there's route parity, and that, that users really will come to our town and benefit our local economy. We really need to have a vision. So this group is, is, is very focused, they're very Sherborne and Framingham oriented, and they're cognizant that we're concerned about this, and I, and I think, you know, I, I think they understand that they're gonna try to make something work for Ashland.
Okay.
One little detail, they seem to have a pretty strong preference to putting the trail on the, on the east side, that's the Sherborne side of the rail tracks. And that could cause a problem for Ashland. They are researching some, some other ways that Ashland might be able to cross the tracks. I don't want to go into too much detail here.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joel. And we'll, we'll keep, you know, as, as Yolanda has a question.
I don't have a question, I have a follow-up to that.
Sure.
So, Rob forwarded me the email that Joel had sent, and the chain of emails regarding the track and Sherborne and the work that was being done between Holliston, Sherborne, and Framingham. As you all know, through the Metro West Regional Collaborative, through MAPC, we have been having a lot of trails meetings, talking about not just a certain section, but how do we connect all the trails in our region as well as across the state? Uh, at the last one, which happened, um, at Broadmoor in Natick, a couple months ago, Sarki had brought to the fact that Framingham was signing their lease, that signing their purchase, their PNS with CNX. So that was moving forward on their northern part, they're having the discussion on the southern part. Uh, so he and I had, I picked up the phone and called him, and he's like, we are not looking to cut out Ashland in any way. Right now, we're looking at the east side, but we know that to make the Upper Charles Loop happen, Ashland and Hawkinson has to be part of it. We've always been there at the table at all these discussions in one way or the other. It may have to happen incrementally, right? It might not, Framingham might be able to do theirs, if they can get, there's two different sections of CSX that they're looking to purchase, so there's the huge train yard, and then there's the tracks south of that that go into Sherborne. So they're looking at different sections and how they can buy them. Sherborne has just recently, within the last year, become really engaged with CSX. They have some people on their board and on their trails committee who are trying to make this happen. So I continue to advocate with the people that are actually working on the trail, maybe not in the same way as Joel is, but it's not, I mean, they know we want to be part of it, and we can certainly continue having these discussions, um, but there's other ways that we're advocating for it as well, so.
I guess I'm, I'm just concerned that it's not, you know, with this incremental thing you're talking about, we want, I, I think we want that connection clear and soon, yeah.
Well, but part of that is, is how they can, when they can get the land, right? I mean, if you look at what Holliston did into Sherborne, well, they now have to wait to see what, what's gonna happen next with their next parcel, and then the large train yard in Framingham, and how they're gonna work with that. It's a continuing process.
We confident that the avenue with, working with Karen Edelman Foster and Jack is sufficient at this point?
Well, this is the first, this is the first step.
That's the first step.
Okay.
And I would say that Karen Edelman Foster was at that trails meeting in Natick, and she knows how important it is for Ashland, I think. You know, the other, the other part that I've heard is the Senator has to be cautious to some extent, because she has a lot of communities that she represents, so she has to be aware of that.
Yep, it's a lot of politics.
Yes, yes.
That's good.
So I think, I think we're doing okay, and the conversation is continuing.
Okay.
That's good.
And we'll continue to put this on our agenda as we get updates, so. Thank you, Rob, thank you, Joel, thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Joel.
Hey, just to be proactive here, motion to.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You mean, you're not optimistic we're gonna get done in the next 12 minutes?
Michael?
Uh, our next item on the agenda is an update on the public forum held on Wednesday, January 25th, on the reuse of the police and fire stations located at 137 and 151 Main Street. Am I turning it over to Jen, to you?
Well, I'll start off, we just, um, you know, obviously, we had a forum last Wednesday, and it was pretty well-attended, about 65 people. Jen and Beth did the, the majority of the presentation, they did a great job explaining just what we had, kind of the process so far, and what we had received in terms of interest. Jen, do you want to talk about the follow-up steps and what's happened since then?
Sure. So, um, we had a pretty good turnout, so we were able to do it hybrid, um, and I think that's, it's been probably the first larger forum that we've done, sort of post-COVID, where we're able to sort of have people in person and then also open it up to Zoom. I think at the peak, we probably had right around 65 people in attendance. And we were able to get some great feedback for the people who attended the meeting. We also videoed, videoed it and put it on our website, sent that out, and we created a little bit of a survey, or feedback tool, that we sent out in Michael's newsletter and various other, um, ways over the weekend, and we kept that open, um, until the following Monday. We were able to receive almost 400 responses, so we got 399 responses. So we're, right now, we're sort of taking all of that feedback in. Beth and I are working on a full RFP, um, that will hopefully be able to, uh, put out in the next couple of weeks, and that will be required to be open for at least 30 days. And we're going to try to be cognizant with that timeline, to give people enough time to put together a solid proposal, but then also to give us enough time collectively as a community to review those proposals. I'm being optimistic that we're gonna get proposals plural, um, and that we have something to sort of look, um, look at and evaluate, and then hopefully, um, we receive something that we all really like and can get behind and bring that to town meeting.
A question on the RFP, so how, how narrow are we going to drill down into, like, because, because the three proposals that, that, or the three responses that we received, one was a, one was a taproom, one was a restaurant, and one was basically, you know, pop-up.
Retail, yeah.
Retail, so, um, are we, and then there was, people were kind of all over the place with lease and buy, and, you know, what they were looking for from the town. Are we going to try to narrow that down considerably, or are we going to try to, um, keep it kind of?
Open?
Squishy, yeah. Open's probably a better terminology. I'm just curious, like, how much are we going to kind of focus on one versus another versus maybe something that we hadn't even heard about yet?
Yeah, so in terms of use, I think we are able to keep that a little bit more open. What we can do is the way we can evaluate, so you, they'll have minimum requirements that everybody will have to meet in order to make sure that they've responded appropriately and met all of those requirements. And then what we can do is in the comparative, there's a comparative analysis that you can do. We can sort of weigh things a little bit more based on the feedback, you know, more advantageous is the RFP terminology. And so we're able to do that, but we can still keep it open. That way, if something, you know, there's certainly a chance that there's somebody sitting out there that didn't, wasn't ready or didn't see the RFI, but now has heard about it, is interested, and maybe propose something that we did not think of or we did not receive. So.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, we still are maintaining the, the housing restriction on the RFP. That's still.
I, I would suggest, just based on the feedback that we have received, yes. I think, you know, we go ahead and put a particular RFP out. If we do get proposals, we'd have an opportunity to review those, see if any of those make sense and to move forward. And if we don't, then we look at, okay, are, do, can we make things a little bit more flexible?
Yeah. And, and that's fine. I mean, my, and I spoke to this at, at the forum. I mean, my, my opinion is that, you know, well, my, my question was, is it realistic and viable to expect real proposals without some component, some residential component? And I think I suggested doing something with a scoring basis. I mean, you know, if, if that were available for a developer, an investor, I would think you'd get a lot more proposals. But you, you know, you would score that much lower than the, any of the things, let's say, that the community had expressed interest in, you know? Either way, I mean, I, I think, ultimately, I believe you're going to get to the point, we are going to get to the point where we're going to have to modify this kind of, you know, idealized wish list in a sense. My opinion.
Yeah, Yolanda, go ahead.
So first of all, thank you. I wasn't able to be there in person, but I was able to watch the forum afterwards. I thought some of the comments and questions from people who attended was very thoughtful and some good ideas. I certainly would recommend that the broader you can make the RFP in regards to what can be done there, certainly within zoning, within the four walls of the, the buildings that we want to keep. I think that would be the best way to go because, as you said, Brandy, we've gotten some ideas, but there might be someone who has now heard about it and is thinking about it a little bit differently, who could bring forth something different. But thank you for doing it. And like I said, I, I apologize for not being there. I was working, but I, I really enjoyed watching it and I think it was really done well.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? We're good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you to Jen, thank you to Beth.
Yeah, well done, Jen.
You guys.
How many folks were in the audience here?
Say about 10 to 15.
10, 15.
Oh, nice. Yeah, good.
So that to the 65, you have close to 80 people.
For, I mean, you know, we haven't had, we haven't had that many people here in person, I think. It was nice.
Yeah, oh, nice.
And then a good number of people on Zoom and it was, it felt, it felt like a, a good groups.
But the idea that you got almost 400 responses means a lot of people went back and watched it afterwards. So that's a good thing, too.
Yep.
Glad it got recorded.
Moving on, update on meeting with Representative Lewis and Karen Adelman-Foster. We briefly touched on this. A couple of other things that we talked about was we discussed the MBTA station renovation. They're going to try to get some more information for us, too, because we don't have a lot of details on that.
Can I just add, because I called Dennis G. and Betty on someone's advice, and he said he talked to them and they were going to get back to him when they had it, the specifications finalized. That's what he's waiting for.
Got it.
Is that kind of similar to what they told, like, that Karen was thinking?
They were getting some more information for us.
So the specifications on the work that needed to be done?
Well, yeah, like, they were, they were still deciding the extent of the work. That's the impression. And they were going to, when they figured it out, they're going to tell Dennis, who's going to tell us.
Okay, cool.
Anyway, don't interrupt.
No, no, no worries. We talked about the Upper Charles Trail. We talked about the budget cycle. As we talked about the, the new governor's budget cycles a little bit later than, but both Representative Lewis and Senate President Spilka were asking if we had any specific projects that we were thinking that we needed funding for. So if there was, so Michael was going to kind of get, get back to them with any potential things that could, could be, could be looked at. We also talked a lot about education issues because the, the issue with out of district costs are, they're hearing it from all sides, from all of their constituents. So they are working or at least aware of the issue and hoping to get some, some solutions. We did ask about how the new millionaire's tax was going to kind of funnel down into, to town budgets, and there's really no guidance on that yet. And they haven't kind of come up with a game plan. Is there anything else that I'm missing?
Was it, was it the one oriented towards education?
Education and infrastructure.
Oh, both. Okay, so it gives you a little bit.
Yeah, so there is, you know, so it's always, it's interesting, it'll be interesting to watch how this game ultimately gets played because, you know, these, these taxes get generated and dedicated to certain, certain avenues. And invariably, they get diverted into other, filling other gaps in the.
And it's really only the first year that they can earmark them. And by the way, there was no discussion as to what was going to happen with other funds that were already targeted for those things. Oh, we could take those out and put these in, but.
Yeah, but that's, that's the way it's played. I mean, there's, you know, there's, you know, I was reading, reading about, you know, tobacco taxes in the state and their tobacco taxes supposedly be dedicated towards education and things of that nature. Of course, it's diverted to filling other holes. So it's just the way it is. I mean, it's a.
Well, to be clear, though, there were, that concern was brought up during the campaign?
Yep.
And it was specifically stated that that is not going to happen.
Well, again.
Specifically called out and stated.
It was, and that's fine, but that doesn't mean they won't take and divert something else. I mean, it's no different than what we do with buckets of money, right?
I think it's, absolutely. Say what they want.
So more, more to, more to come.
But I think the big thing really with the millionaire's tax, as we mentioned it, is the kind of the one-time millionaires, the impact on one-time situations when somebody sells a business or a piece of property. They're not technically, you know, so I think in that, I don't know if they're, they're going to adjust that.
Probably not.
But, so we'll meet again with them in another three months, so.
When are they coming to all of us? When are they going to, when is our schedule to have the representative and our senator come and speak to all of us?
We did talk about that as well. So hopefully March, but we don't have a date yet. So.
Sooner than Lena, that's good.
Yeah, so I said to Karen Adelman-Foster, I don't, you know, like, let's just get a date on the calendar, like, whatever it is, it is. So, you know, both Representative Lewis and the Senate President were in front of the Framingham City Council not too long ago, so, you know.
Well, and they were both in town.
On Tuesday, there was the State of the Town address, I think, on Tuesday night. That's where they were.
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
They were also both in town last week or two weeks ago for the feud insecurity event that happened in our town, in our library.
So hopefully we'll get that date soon.
So one question about, so the, the getting back to them about the projects and stuff, are we going to have a meeting to, to review, you know, what we want to go back to them with? Are, you know, and also it reminds me that we haven't, we talked about scheduling a retreat to talk about, I would assume, things like that. So is that a mechanism that we would, you know, you know, put together some sort of list of projects or priorities for them or?
I mean, ideally, yes. That's what we'd like to do. You know, we told them, you know, at the meeting that our priority is not to add on any new projects. And if we do add, you know, ask for funding, that it would be more to support the existing things that we're doing and the existing projects.
Oh, that would be great. So they're looking for funding, they want other projects, other projects that were promised and never came through. Well.
Well.
That's been discussed.
Hey, you know, it's out there. I'll put it on the table. I'm not afraid to put it on the table.
Certainly something we can talk about.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, that one. The elephant that's in the room.
Well, it's still good to, like, meet with them on a quarterly basis and touch base, so we will do that again.
What, what about our retreat?
Oh, I thought you were, oh, I thought you were going someplace else, so.
No, retreat.
We're waiting.
I mean, it's just, I just want to remind people, we have talked about it, but we haven't really scheduled it.
Aren't we still waiting for some specifics?
We're waiting for some clarification.
On some things.
So that could be part of the retreat. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is update on the fatality of, on the railroad tracks. Michael, you want to kind of touch, touch on that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, a couple Thursdays ago, we had an accident on the tracks where a gentleman was, unfortunately, from the reports that we have and right now was trying to cross the tracks and was unfortunately hit by the train. So far, it's been deemed an accident. So we've requested the report from the MBTA, their, their investigation report. Because one of the things that we wanted to see is if there's anything in there that, that recommend, any recommendations that we could implement to help keep this from happening again. So we're still waiting on that report. But, yeah, certainly an unfortunate incident. You know, not to, you know, obviously, there's this human side to it. And then, you know, I do have to bring up some of the more policy type of implications. I, I do have a concern that this is going to impact our ability to get a quiet zone just because, you know, each time we have one of those incidents, we get points deducted off of our score. And so we have to be above a certain threshold to qualify for a quiet zone. So I don't have anything official yet, but ironically, that afternoon, we were meeting with the Federal Railroad Administration about an accident that happened two weeks ago when the GPS diverted a car down the tracks. Fortunately, that's not going to impact.
I would think that's those kinds of things, if someone makes a, you know, I understand, you know, fatalities, but if someone, obviously, if the GPS sent them down there, that had nothing to do with the quiet zone.
Yeah.
And the other one in front of stones, obviously, someone made a turn or, I still don't know how they did that, but, so. So can, when you, once you get that update, can we get it? Because I know right now, we're on track for 2024 to do the construction on the quiet zone.
Yeah, so it's on the tip for 2024.
Right, okay.
One thing, I had, I'd asked it to be, this be put on the agenda, and I did ask Brian at the MBTA to, to request that as well.
I heard.
And actually, he's going to try to get Senator Spilka's office involved because I think, well, first of all, I do want to, you know, this was, you know, this was a personal tragedy and, you know, I think our, our hearts and prayers go out to the family of Jason Haywood, which I, I didn't know the gentleman and, you know, it's got to be a really traumatic and, you know, grievous event to be killed suddenly unexpectedly. You know, when you're just on your way home and, you know, we all know exactly what happened. But I know that his, his family was on the news, you know, urging that the MBTA review their safety procedures. And actually, the, in the T, in the statement that I read, said something interesting that I was surprised to hear, that sometimes pedestrians are unable to hear the train approaching because of the high speed and the way the horn works, which I thought was an astonishing thing to say. But, so I did request that report with just some kind of analysis because I think, and Joe, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I, this is not the first pedestrian fatality that, there was one, I think, within the last 10 years.
There've been many.
Oh, there's been several within the last 10 years.
So we have kind of a pattern, you know, a horrible pattern going on here. There was the, just last year, there was the woman whose car got stuck on the tracks who got out just in time. And so, you know, I, I think they, the T should be looking closely at this as well, and we should as well, for things like measures, you know, that we could do to prevent people, whether they're being careless or distracted or they can't really hear it, you know, that there's an extra kind of layer of safety there. And so that's why I think we're, it behooves us to look closely at this. And then, of course, you get into the whole quiet zone where there would be no horn, but, you know, better barriers.
Right.
Which, you know, so maybe that's something to, you know, something we should be looking closely at and maybe us as local officials could do, there's something we can do and it's not, you know, to help the T be a little better at this. So that's why I put it on the agenda. And hopefully, when we will get some kind of detailed information that will be useful, we can come back and discuss it. So, anyway, but, you know, so that was, that was why I wanted to discuss it, so.
Thank you, Rob. Update on the repairs slash maintenance at the MBTA station. Do we have any?
Do not have any updates.
Yeah, the only update, the one, they're going to get back. I'm going to try to call them directly and see what the guy, hopefully, he'll repeat the kinds of things he told me at that meeting, which I didn't write down in detail, but, you know, he did list a number of things they intended to do, so I'll try to continue with that, so.
And the timeline for that is hopefully this spring.
Yeah, they were talking soon, which is why, you know, it's a little concerning they haven't come up with specifics.
So while we're talking about transportation, I think I read, and I tried to pull it up, I believe the MWR TA is looking for a new board member?
Yes, I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, so it might be someone on the board that might be interested in serving.
From Ashland?
From, well, it's open, it's an open seat.
It's an email that we got today.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, I was going to ask what people knew about it, if we should be concerned, you know, if we should try to get on it.
You know, I, I would suggest, you know, somebody from the, from the board who might be interested, has the time to at least find out about it. It might be a good opportunity for Ashland to be.
Let me, once a month on the Thursday.
You know, I know Ed is the Ashland representative, but he's, and they participated on the board, but I think that's, this is a different role.
This is the water resources, I, are you talking about the water resources?
No, isn't this MWR TA?
I thought it was. I thought it was the MWRA.
Is that what it is?
MWRA Advisory Board?
Is it MWRA?
Using Notes, MWRA.
Okay, forget all of that.
Well, no, but it's still, but it's still important, though.
Yeah, no, but, you know, I.
We're not going to, you know, but.
The RTA is, is much more, it's closer.
Impactful, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Scratch that. I just looked at it quickly.
Good intention.
I saw MW.
Well, but, so I'll piggyback on that, though. I think, is that something we should be concerned about? We're now a member. I, you know, how important is that for, do we have a feeling for it? Something we'll just think about?
Hmm.
You get to go to Deer Island and go to tours and things like that?
It's no big picnic, let me tell you.
Maybe we can put that on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Road trip.
Update on Comprehensive Plan Project Management Group and appointing of Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Do you want me to take this? You want to take this?
Why don't you start it off?
So Yolanda and myself and Michael met with Kate and Anna and Peter probably about two weeks ago now. I'm losing track of time. And we discussed a couple of things. So we reviewed a letter to, to boards and committees for the steering committee. We reviewed the list of who it was going to be going to. We talked about criteria and things that were important to us to include in the RFP. So we are meeting next week to, to talk more details about the RFP. We're also, Michael had sent out the email to the boards and committees and with the thought that we're asking committees to get back to us by March 1st with whether or not they want to participate and who they want to send as their representative. And so we're also going to do a, sort of a public outreach to get members of the precincts to, to sign up as well because we're looking for one member per precinct for representation. So we'll look at, like, some outreach and some flyers and things like that next week, too. So I think we, we want to kind of start talking about potential dates. Because the two things that we are doing jointly with the planning board is appointing the steering committee and then also, um, appointing, going through the finalists for the RFP and choosing a consultant as, as a joint, um, joint effort. The, uh, RFP is going to still be a little while away, but, um, we can start talking about potentially when we want to, um, meet us with the planning board. Kate Jersik has issues with, she teaches on Wednesday nights, so she can't make our meetings. It's probably easier if we, if it was either a select board meeting or a planning board meeting where we just get on the agenda rather than creating a, a third night for everybody. So, throwing it out there, like, potentially, I was looking at the plan, the planning board's meeting dates in March, following the, the March first date that we were coming up with, um, that hopefully we'll have a list of, and then we're meeting.
Do you want to try to schedule it now, or?
Well, so the other thing I wanted to, Michael, do you have the date?
While you're pulling that up, um, I would just recommend, I think we should look at two separate meetings.
Okay.
One meeting that would be, you know, and if it needs to tie in with a planning board, that's a shorter meeting, that's, we're looking at the steering committee. And then a second meet would be, because I think that's going to be later, is reviewing the RFP responses. I don't know that we, I don't know that we're going to get it all done in one meeting.
No, 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 I don't think so.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Because I think, I think my guess is, is, I don't know if we're going to be ready to, to have responses back from the RFP by, by the day.
Probably not, right?
What is our, do you know what our, um, I don't have it on my calendar for some reason, what is the date that, that our, that our project management team is meeting in March?
We are meeting on March sixteenth.
Okay.
But I think that's a, oh, no, that's a, that's a, that's an evening one.
So maybe the twenty-third, which is the second planning board's meeting of the month, maybe we can, if that date might work for everyone, we, that might be a good date.
For appointing the steering committee members.
Yes.
Hopefully, they can fit us on the planning board agenda.
Right, it depends on their calendar, so. Well, we're meeting Monday, so maybe we can recommend it to Kate and Peter and Anna.
That's a good idea.
To add us on the twenty-third.
Okay.
So that's the appointment meeting?
Yes.
And that, and that's, is that for all the steering committee, or just like the committees?
I think for all of them.
Yeah, I think we would hope for all of them.
I would think that in one of Michael's next emails would be the call for
The precinct.
The precinct people.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be working, I've got some time carved out to work on that tomorrow. Hopefully, there's no emergencies that come up in, in the RFP, so.
Good, yeah. And that's the extent of the at-large membership, is it the precinct?
Six precinct members, yes.
By the way, the upper trust, I mean, Joel's already scheduling us, them for next week to appoint.
Oh, good.
Good. We wanted to make sure that we gave boards and committees enough time to be able to put it on, on an agenda.
And decide it before the March first.
Yeah, council, council on aging has a monthly meeting tomorrow, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Yolanda, was there anything else that I missed that, no, I think that covered it, that covered it? Was there anything that you wanted to add?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Works for me. Um, moving on our agenda, we already approved the consent agenda, we're on to priority project update downtown.
Yeah, and I'll be brief on these, because there's not too much to update you on. Uh, so they're continuing to work on, obviously, jacking underneath the tracks. So far, that's going smoothly, this go-around, and so that's, that's good news. Um, they expect to be done by the end of the month, so.
I would suggest, if you have time to get down there at all, to look at it, it is unbelievable, and
How deep it is?
How deep it is and the precision, I went over at one point, when they had the big drills laying there, and one of the police officers came over, and he's like, you know, if they're off by, you know, a centimeter in going up, then they're off by, it was just very cool.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Very, very, um, unique operation, for sure.
Yeah.
So public safety building, so what I have is, you know, the board had, we'd already discussed it, actually, the board had asked me to put something out about the doors, I did do that. Anything you want to add specifically?
I did have a question, um, I know we had talked at one point about doing a tour. I would still love to see the inside, because I haven't seen the inside yet.
Same here.
Okay. That would be awesome, okay, thanks.
Can you get clean?
It's clean.
Great. Minda's School, so we, uh, we have a site walk coming up on this Saturday, I believe everybody's got their invitation. Valentine Project, they're still working on, um, the barn. It's still, still focusing on the foundation of that. And, um, you know, Yolanda and Carl and I are still hoping to meet with the potential holder of the conservation restriction soon, so, good.
I've reached out, and I'm waiting for them to respond back.
Okay. And, uh, really, nothing on the Warren District, I, I haven't touched base with Paul Augustus in, in a while. We're going to actually go to the Historical Commission meeting on the seventh to discuss, um, the contribution that he is going to make to the Historical Commission. And then also talk about what's going to be on the kiosk, um, you know, given the history of the site.
Very good.
Let's see, so town manager report, uh, there's, really only had a couple of things. First is, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we did submit our first step in the MBTA zoning process.
Like, that's like actually the second step, right? The first step was last?
Yeah, exactly, so it's, um, you know, generic's not the word for it, but really, this form just talks about some of the things that we're currently under, undertaking, and, you know, if we were, what our, you know, zoning around the train station is currently, and things like that, so, uh, thanks to Pete for putting that together.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, just to remind me, so this is where we're telling them that we have what our zoning is, and it's kind of okay in terms of what they're looking for?
It's, it's just very, it's very, um, it, it's really just kind of generic about like, what our current situation is, what kind of studies we've been through, what kind of things that we're going through. So Peter made sure we talked about the comprehensive plan to be a part of that. Also mentioned, you know, we did a housing production plan recently, we looked at inclusionary zoning, you know, that hasn't.
Just remind me that, where do we, where are we heading with this? Do we think we have to tweak our zoning, or do we think our zoning's okay? I'm just trying to remember.
So ultimately, we'll have to go through a more thorough analysis of our zoning.
Okay.
And see if it's in compliance, and if not, we will need to make tweaks, um, and present those at town meeting.
Okay.
So what, on, on the flip side, though, they are, you know, it's not one size fits all either, in terms of the kind of parameters. I think they've, they've realized that they can't apply this, you know, distance from. It's not a cookie, so how, have they, clearly, at some point, they're going to come back with that kind of determination, or is that something that we need to advocate for, so, you know?
So they have already come back and given us kind of the, the parameters, so like, you know, and I don't have the specifics in front of me, so like, you know, thirty percent of the required units can be outside of that half-mile range, half-mile radius, uh, something to that effect, I don't remember the exact one. So what we'll have to do is, we'll have to go ahead and put together a proposal, and tell them about, okay, this is what we're proposing to do in terms of zoning, and this is how it would meet the requirements, and we need to make tweaks, this is what we would be proposing for the tweaks.
Okay, so we can push back on, on their parameters?
We'll have to operate within their parameters.
There's no pushback on it, if we, uh, have a good argument, that, you know?
I, I haven't seen any, like, adjudication type of process.
The other thing is, you don't have to do any of this, you can decide as a community not to fill out their forms and not to do the housing.
We know that, we don't have to do any of it, and then you're, you're exempt from grants and so on, so I don't think that's desirable.
I thought their guidance was pretty much finalized at this point, and it's just, I think we have time, though, right? We have like
Oh, it's two years.
Yeah, so we don't have to come up with a plan.
You had to do the form by the end of January, and now you have some time to work it through.
Yeah, so, and it's only, it's only zoning, we don't have to necessarily build these houses.
Zone the church.
Which is like, almost ridiculous, right? They're trying to increase housing, but they're, you just have to change the zoning, you don't necessarily have to build it.
Yeah, right, so, you know, I, I think we'll be able to focus on that a little bit more, um, probably in fall, in winter, you know, maybe into 2024. Just as the planning board goes through and works through some of the stuff that they've currently got going on.
Well, it makes sense to kind of tie it into the comprehensive plan process, too.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, so. And then the last thing, I just, so I want to bring up kind of this broader issue of staffing, and we've talked about it. You know, generally, and talked about it in bits and pieces, but, um, we are, there's a couple of different, different elements here. Um, one is, like, the number of staff positions that we have here relative to the expectations of the community. The other is the ability to attract good candidates for those positions that are vacant, that we do have, and some of the variables that affect that. So from a staffing perspective, um, you know, it's been no secret, you know, I've, like, no secret, we're entirely understaffed for the level of services that we're providing, the expectations that are provided. So, um, I have an obligation to, you know, put forward to you a recommendation, probably through the budget, that is going to say, okay, if this is what the expectation is, this is what we need in terms of resources to provide that, and start having that discussion.
Right. I'm sorry, Joe.
Are you referring to town-wide departments, or just?
Town-wide departments, Joe.
Yeah, that was my question as well, so across the board.
Yes.
Are there s- some departments that are more critical, you know, from your perspective than others? And I, you know, I'm just thinking maybe the planning board, given, you know, some of the turnovers that we've had with, you know, assistant planners, and given the workload that's going on in the planning department?
Well, I, I think there definitely needs to be additional staff in the planning department. You know, the turnover and things like that, that goes to that second point that I was talking about, the variables that depend on, on the, on attracting and retaining candidates. But, um, no, I think they're all, they're all urgent. We need more police, we need more fire, we need more DPW, we need more, um, just, we need a lot.
So where's this leading to in terms of discussion? So, you know, you have, as we go into the budget, what are your kind of options or alternatives that you're asking us?
So I don't know specifically yet.
So the only thing I'd throw out there is what I've mentioned many times, we do have, can we use these temporary government funds to help supplement some of these, at least for two or three years? You know, supplement some of these staffing shortages that are outside of the regular budget? You know, because it looks to me like the regular budget's going to be constricted.
Yeah, I think we'll have to look at the trade-offs of that, and, uh, you know, what that would mean down the road, what does that mean for now?
And it's, down the road, it's two or three years away, which, so you buy some time and see what you can do, that's the way I look at it, you know? And maybe this goes into this ask that we just talked about, you know, I'd love to have some kind of strategic trails manager, or somebody who could take on these kind of easement things that we've been kicking around for years.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, I'm going to start using this phrase a lot, so we do a lot of things. But we're really at the point where we're not doing many of them well. And, you know, we can't give the attention to each, to everything to the level of detail that we really should, that's fair to, um, not just our staff, but also you as the board, and then also the residents, I think that's something that, that we have to think about.
So maybe we can use these one-time funds to give us a year or two of, you know, that's.
Maybe, because, so the other thing that we have to talk about also is, um, compensation. And what is happening in the industry across all the different departments, and, um, what that means for us. Uh, I will let you know that there's no secret that we have a, we're having a hard time attracting candidates in their police department. I think we're down seven, seven positions right now.
Down seven positions?
Out of, one personnel of twenty-nine, and that includes the chief and the, you know, two lieutenants and the deputy chief, and.
Is that purely a function of salary, or is that, I think there's other, other variables in play there, but I would think, I would think, but to go to your point about salary and comparative salary, um, you know, uh, uh, if we're not competitive at some point, and, and apparently, this is what's happening right now, if we're not competitive, we're not attracting candidates.
So this is not unique to our town or our police department, it's being discussed
Everywhere.
statewide, I was on a, a finance meeting for MAPC, they're looking for people, they're having a hard time, but also out in the public, right? Public sector is also having a problem, so. I, you know, we have to, you know, Rob's saying, you know, throw one-time funds at it, but you do that for a couple of years, and then all of a sudden, you don't have those funds. And you haven't then progressed along with that, and then all of a sudden, right? And that, to me, is a big downside, because then we're, we're dependent on these one-time funds to bring in personnel.
A burden of hand, that's all I think.
Have you done your comparative, you know, analysis on, on salaries?
So both that and the staffing numbers are, we're currently undergoing as well.
I'd like to see, sure, we ought to.
Yeah, I think that would be very important to see.
Oh, I mean, it's going to have to be a detailed discussion.
Yeah, I think that would, maybe a retreat agenda item.
So is this looking, are you looking to, to do this for the twenty-four budget, FY twenty-four budget?
So I'm looking at starting the conversation for the FY twenty-four budget.
Okay.
I, I don't know how, you know, what that is going to translate into, um, in terms of an actual, you know, budget proposal that I put before you, but.
So you're thinking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so, you know, I know the schools are going to be a big part of the conversation, too, because obviously, their budgets are going to be stretched
Yes.
really thin, um, which I think is good, good that we're having, you know, we're planning a tri-board meeting, and that, you know, we're part of the, the, our budget workshop as well, um, you know, it, it would be interesting, like, I, I, I completely agree with what you're saying, so that is, that is first and foremost. I think we do need to see if we can be a, think a little out of the box, maybe working with, whether it's working with the schools, or working with other, you know, maybe there's something else we can regionalize, and I know regionalization doesn't work for everything, doesn't work for a lot of things, but, you know, if we're looking for, whether it's DPW staff, or if, you know, if there's ways that we can share those costs with another town, like, I'm just, I'm throwing things out there because I think we need to have those conversations, because if we're, if we're asking for more money, and however we ask for that money.
Yeah, you know, we've had those conversations for years and years about, specifically about regionalization, and some things, I mean, Yolanda, Joe and I can talk about the, the regionalization of fire departments with Hopkinton, and how that, that was pretty much a, a waste of time.
Eighteen-month discussion, and then done.
So, you know, I think, um, to me, what Michael hasn't said here is, you know, he's talking about the spending side of it, not talking about the revenue side at this point. And that's, that's the, you know, the, the big piece, and I know, you know, I tend to agree with, with Yolanda on this in terms of using these one-time fees for, you know, maybe for a year, it bridges something, but, but in any event, it's, you know, it, it, to me, I, I'm looking at this somewhat like this budget discussion, this debt ceiling discussion at the federal level, and, uh, you know, it's, the, the, the two sides are pitted, and one side wants to reduce spending, and they're, you know, the, the suggestions are going after programs like, social security and Medicare and so on, and, you know, but the takeaway ultimately is, is, you know, where, where's it come from? You know, if we're, if we're not going to generate the additional money, what are we going to cut?
Yep.
And if we want to generate additional monies, it's not going to come from regionalization. That's, you know, we, we should do that without question, but that's not going to be a major revenue source, so, you know, you want to talk about having the, the, the elephant in the room conversation, you know, that's going to be sooner rather than later, I think. And I didn't say the word, well.
But I also think tying into that, right, one of the things we keep talking about is this comprehensive plan and, and. But, but I also think tying into that, right, one of the things we keep talking about is this comprehensive plan and, and strategic plan for our community. Michael, you keep bringing up, you know, we can't, we can't maintain the services that we, that we, that the community is expecting of us. Well, I think through this strategic comprehensive plan, we're going to find out if the community really wants some of these services that we, that we're doing. And if they want us to maintain them, and part of wanting to maintain them is then potentially helping to pay, to pay for them. Right? So that's part of the discussion as well, right? We, we, you know, we, we add this, we add that, and that's great. But sometimes it's not always with a thorough discussion that stuff gets added or, or a public discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I think it's, I mean, you can cut it a bunch of different ways. It's really black and white. And it's, you know, things, labor, materials, things, they cost something.
Right.
And if you want to provide a certain level of services, that costs something. Even if you do it as efficiently as possible, it costs something. And then, you know, the community ultimately has to be the ones that decide whether or not they want to pay to have those services. But where, you know, we don't want to get into a place is where the expectation of those services remains and the resources to support it are not there.
I mean, the other thing, we all are very aware that right now, we are doing a lot, right? That takes extra time, right? We have Route 126, we have downtown, we have the Mendez, we have the Publix. Those are four major projects, right? Now granted, when they're done, there's other smaller ones. But as we've been saying, we want to have a retreat to sort of talk about, how can we spread some of this out rather than having all of this happen at once? Now, how we got here, there's a lot of history and some of it was not planned to all happen at once. But sometimes because of when monies hit or when we were targeted or stuff like that. So I think we, as a board and with, with the public in some way, need to determine, what are we doing next, right? What are our next steps? Are there other big projects or can we wait? I mean, my history from the town is we do a lot of stuff at once and then we take a break, right? We did town hall, we did the library, we did the community center, we did the high school, all within a couple of years. And then we did nothing because our debt was very high and we didn't want to incur any more debt. We need to do some long-term planning, which we're hoping to do now, that says, okay, rather than doing all these projects at once, how can we spread it out?
But even if we do nothing, you know, let's assume all these things are done, it's still an operational budget issue.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, because you still need to have a certain amount of officers.
Police officers, you need your fire department, you need your DPW, your educational system, which is the bulk of our, our spending. So that by itself is going to, you know, certainly generate, you know, pressures on, on revenues.
And if you, if you continue the path that we're going in now, which is utilizing Ashland is becoming a stepping stone for many of these individuals that take these positions for two or three years at best. And then they move on to other departments and other towns because their baseline is much higher than we could ever conceive. So, I mean, you have to look at those figures and say, okay, how, how do you, how do you address that? Well, the only way you address it is you don't get up to the top figure, but you, you walk your way up towards maybe the middle.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's going to cost the town. And I'm not just saying police and fire, schools as well.
And possibly putting something in our, in our, our agreements and, you know, I don't know where this is at, you know? My understanding is we bring police officers in, we send them through training, and then within a couple of years, they move on.
So, so that has happened since I've been here. I, I will say, I will say once, within a year, within a year.
They left within a year, okay. But even within a couple of years, I would think that we need to try to address that.
I, I think the issue is more that, you know, working in municipal government is less desirable today.
Oh, a hundred percent.
When it was ten years ago. So I think that's the big challenge.
I mean, several of my colleagues who are younger than me are hanging up the cleat.
Yeah, yeah. And, 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 you know, you can speak to all the reasons for that. But that's, that's the big, that's the big.
Oh, that was a good one.
So more to come soon on this, and this will be part of the budget discussion and just in general.
And I'm not trying to panic anybody or anything, I'm just, we need to have the, start the discussion.
I'm going to get a few things, I'm ready to rock and roll.
Do you have anything else under Town Manager Reports?
That's enough.
That's it? All right, so moving into Board Reports. Joe, you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, before I turn into a pumpkin. Few things, I just want to publicly again thank Rob St. Germain for the many years of service to the town. He's going to be greatly missed even though he'll be around doing the things that he always does, but, because I know it's, it's part of his blood. So thank you very much, Rob, and we appreciate everything that you've done. I will be sitting down talking with Michael at some point when it can make a time to sit with him. The Ashland Traffic Study Committee, along with the school, have sat down and discussed the potential of expanding the side parking area of the Warren School. Now, the town owns a piece of property to the left of that building. Now, a lot of it may be conservation, so we have to do actually a wetland mitigation area.
Tennis court, is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, and, and the front of that as well. So if we were to take fifteen feet, which is what we basically need to extend that driveway out, we can eliminate a lot of that excess parking on Elliott Street by putting in a, another route and lane in. That's being designed and we're working on that. Dicky Small is going to be talking to you about getting some additional funding. I know the school has made a commitment to put $5,000 towards the study. That was not provided to us the other day. So it's, it's something that we're working on. And that's also with the design of the Fruit Street and Elliott Street intersection by making that a three-way stop. Once, once the new public safety building is, is open. So, you know, we may see that, we may see that in 2024.
It doesn't have to be that long.
No, it's an inside joke. And other than that, my sincerest condolences to the Huey family, to Sue and all the family and the Thibodeau family with the passing of her husband Dick. Great man, a wonderful individual, and has left us too soon. And may he rest in peace. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Yolanda, you're up next.
Just one or two short things. So Metro West Regional Collaborative, we had a meeting this past week. We're going to be scheduling a legislative breakfast for some time in May, so I'll let you know when that happens. They are going to be doing an event on the new stretch code. There is a new stretch code. And as a green community, it might be something we want to look at to enact. And we can get more on that.
Steve brought that up last week.
Yeah, last week, yes. No, it's more net zero oriented.
Yeah, it's a good item for the sustainability.
So something to look at. And, and MAPC is doing an event on it.
Good.
And that's all I got for tonight.
My turn?
Your turn.
Because I don't want it to be 25-minute board reports. I don't want, I saw that it says Board Reports, 25 minutes.
Twenty-five minutes, I know.
Don't forget, Rob still has to go.
Yeah, so.
I'm going to be quick because I, I used up all my time on cannabis, on cannabis earlier.
Just remember, Tom Brady said he has one retirement speech, a long essay, and he used it up last year, so.
Oh, I still have, I'm not sure, at least five or six meetings left, so. And I warned everybody. So the last couple of weeks, Bonnie and I have been going to the community club, the Framingham State University Community, Community Club. They've been having these Tuesday night dinners and they're very, very well done. Point of bringing it up is it's open to Ashland residents. It's very inexpensive, it's almost free in a sense. And it's a great venue. They're hosting dinners in the lodge at, at the Warren Center. In season, there's access to pickleball, there's access to kayaking. They're going to, at some point, complete a clubhouse. So it's really, I think, for, very inexpensively, I think it's a great asset for Ashland residents to consider. And the food is good, their chef is very good, so.
Do people need to sign up?
Well, you need to.
It's a community club, right?
Yes, it's called the Community Club. And you can just, you can Google Framingham State Community Club, all the info is there, so. No such thing as a free lunch, but there is a free breakfast tomorrow morning at the community centers. The Ashland Lions Club Monthly Senior Breakfast. There was an interesting article, I don't know if anybody else on the board looks at Commonwealth Magazine?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So they had an article, very interesting, Citizens Energy Pushing Community Solar. And just the first couple of sentences. "Once known for giving heating oil away, the nonprofit company founded by Joe Kennedy II and now managed by his son Joe III is leveraging solar power to drive down electricity bills for low-income consumers." "A project the company developed on a former Superfund site in Ashland was recently named one of the five grand prize winners in the SUNNY competition, a U.S. Department of Energy program that recognizes projects that promote community solar." I thought that was pretty cool. You going to make it there?
How come we didn't know about it? We should have been there to get an award too.
Well, I thought that was, you know, yeah, pretty interesting, just to make note of. And the last thing on my list is I wanted to extend my sympathies to the family of Tyree Nichols. And Tyree Nichols is the young man that was killed during a traffic stop in Memphis. And I don't want to get into a commentary about the event and what happened. I just, you know, reading the articles, I came upon a website that he had, a photography website. And, you know, he's a young guy, working, has a child, close to his family. But one of his passions is, is photography, so he's got a website. And, you know, he's just got a couple of quotes on there that, that says, you know, "Welcome to my world through my eyes." And, and he says, "A good photographer must love life more than photography itself." And, you know, he's got a series of interesting, very interesting pictures from his, from his perspective. And, you know, all my kind of silly selfies aside, I, I take a lot of other photographs as well. And so I could appreciate what he was, you know, the things that, that captured his imagination. So I just, you know, and you can't help but think what a waste, you know? So I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. Rob, you're up next.
I don't, I don't have anything tonight.
Oh, wow, you are quick. Wow, okay. I don't have a whole lot. I just wanted to, Michael, myself and Peter Matzek are going to be at a National Business Association event next Wednesday morning at nine AM. The ABA is having a panel discussion about things that are going on in Ashland, construction, development, issues, goals. I don't even know where it is. I'm sorry?
I'm going to be your moderator.
Sweet.
Good. So you'll feed us questions in advance?
Look, you've got to limit your time.
So.
What time is it?
It's nine AM and I can't remember exactly, is it?
Wednesday the eighth.
At Beagle Table? Where is it?
No, here.
No, here. Oh, okay.
It's here.
Okay.
They're going to offer coffee and stuff at, from eight thirty to nine, and then it's happening here. And then we're either going to record or try to do it live, so it'll be available on the ABA website.
So it's nine, nine till when?
You do not have to be an ABA member to attend.
No. So that is next Wednesday. I'm glad you told me it was here because I was going to, I probably would have panicked next Wednesday. Where, where am I supposed to be? On the twelfth is the, the Clocker Pancake Breakfast over at the high school, which is back in person from eight to eleven on Sunday the twelfth. And you can buy discounted tickets in advance on their website, on the Clocker Club. But pancakes and sausage and I think the Clocker is going to make an appearance and there's raffles and baskets and things. So I always, I always suggest that anyone that's running for office bring their signature pages because it's a really great way to meet people and get signatures for running for office. And I see Preston on Zoom, so that's my, that's my tip for tonight. And the one other thing I wanted to just make mention of, speaking back to in-person things, the AEFI is doing their annual event, which used to be a gala, and now it's a casino night over at the Warren Conference Center this year. So that is Saturday, March 25th. Tickets just went on sale, so.
Get a table? Table?
Yeah, we did that for a number of years at the, at the Sheraton.
Oh, that would be fun. Yeah.
That was good.
So, so just throwing that out there, that there, so it should be a, it should be a fun night. Saturday, March 25th. So. Okay. All right. And that is all I have tonight. So unless anybody else has anything further, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, seconds.
And all those in favor?
All right.
Good night, everyone. We are adjourned. It is 10:47.
Yeah, seriously.
Yep. So we'll see you in two weeks on the fifteenth.